Everybody doing well? It's not even, everybody looks so well. But you? Yeah? Instead, I will call the meeting to order. First of all, I'm going to put you out again. We'll give you time. Um, we're going to load it up. We're going to be this.
Pretty well, pretty good. And we're gonna get you guys home. I'm gonna tell you what Elizabeth Taylor said to one of her husbands. I'm not gonna keep you long. Okay. Here we go. All right. Here we go. We're gonna do roll call, all right?
Trustee Herren.
Here.
Trustee Montez.
Here.
Trustee Sierra.
Here.
Trustee Silver.
Here.
Trustee Slover. Vice President Hill.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here. Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, minutes. Do we need approval for the minutes?
No, sir.
That's why we didn't have you on. Oh, is any citizen here want to request to address the board? You might online, uh, yes?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any committee reports today? None already? No new business? Okay. Moving right along. Nine eight, twenty twenty-five tax levy estimate for the twenty. We need approval for the twenty twenty-six budget?
Good evening.
Hi.
You have in front of you, or in your packages, the twenty twenty-five tax levy estimate. This is for the property taxes that would be received in twenty twenty-six. In compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act, we are required to put an estimate in front of you twenty days before we approve the levy. You will see from the attached document in your files that the increase in levy is four point nine two percent, which is under the truth and taxation requirement of five percent.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve it? Thank you. It's a second. Second. Questions?
So is, I'm trying to remember. I think I probably asked this question last year. Do we typically approve the tax levy that funds the twenty twenty-six or the upcoming budget prior to approval of the budget?
You're only approving the estimate. So this estimate that's in front of you is based on the numbers that are in the budget document that you have for tonight. If you were to change items in the budget that would require us to put an estimate back in front of you, we would have to do that. But generally, we assume the budget as presented is this tax levy. If you approve the budget as presented and don't have material changes that would change the percent increase, then the actual levy that you would approve, the actual levy that files with the county, not the estimate, happens in December.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Roll call?
Trustee Herren.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Trustee Silver.
Aye.
Trustee Slover.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Hi. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna get ready. Uh, nine D. Uh, present the twenty twenty-six budget presentation. Starting with Emily's in the house tonight?
I am, and I move spots just to keep you all on your toes. All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
To our valued Board of Trustees who we present to in person, thank you for your commitment to the Peoria Park District. To our staff who are with us here tonight and those who are here online or in spirit, thank you for all that you do to make our words tonight have depth and energy. What we say is a representation of your hard work and expertise. Finally, to those community members who are here in person and those who are joining us online, thank you for your persistent push to ensure that our district serves you to the best of its abilities. We see you and appreciate you. As approved by this Board of Trustees, our organizational mission stands as a north star for all of our work and our commitment to contribute to healthy and vibrant communities by responsibly using our resources to offer high-quality parks, recreation, and education experiences to those who live, work, or play in our district. Please know that when we say that, we mean clearly that our parks, recreation, and education experiences are for all people who live, work, or play with us. Since 2018, our district has worked to prioritize our initiatives so that we can be the best stewards of the incredible resources that we are charged with activating. Each of these commitments serves as a lens through which both strategy and daily operations are evaluated and conducted in order to focus our work.
Our first core commitment is diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. At the heart of our work is the belief that parks and recreation should be for everyone. Our commitment to DEIA ensures that all individuals, regardless of race, color, gender, disability, age, or culture, feel welcome and represented in the spaces we maintain and the programs we offer. By fostering a diverse workforce that represents and looks like the communities we serve, while also actively seeking community feedback at regular intervals, we create opportunities that reflect the needs of those we serve. This commitment is integrated into our strategic priorities by shaping policies, improving access to facilities and programs, and by strengthening partnerships with organizations that support underserved populations.
Environmental sustainability. As stewards of more than sixteen hundred acres of natural areas, the Peoria Park District is committed to protecting and enhancing the environmental health of our community. Sustainability is more than a responsibility. It is a guiding principle that influences our approach to resource management, facility operations, and long-term planning. By prioritizing conservation, preservation, and restoration efforts, we ensure that future generations can enjoy the beauty and benefits of Peoria's natural spaces. This commitment is embedded in our strategic priorities by promoting eco-friendly practices, reducing our carbon footprint, and educating the public about environmental stewardship.
Our next commitment is vibrancy. A thriving community is one that is active, engaged, and inspired. Our commitment to vibrancy means creating dynamic spaces, programs, and experiences that enhance quality of life. Whether through recreational opportunities, cultural events, or wellness initiatives, we strive to provide meaningful experiences that encourage social connections and personal growth. By aligning this commitment with our strategic priorities, we focus on innovative programming, infrastructure improvements, and partnerships that contribute to the overall vitality of Peoria.
In 2025, we implemented a three-year strategic plan for the first time since COVID, changed the landscape in which our organization and our world navigated. This plan focuses on three key priorities that are important drivers for our work.
First, we talked at length about capital needs in our district, some of which are legal mandates, some are focused on vibrancy and reputation, while others are necessary to stay competitive in our market. In 2025, we have moved several key projects forward. In addition to the soon-to-open golf learning center, which has been the focus of many on our team this year, we have also moved forward with design efforts for both Owen Center and Peoria Zoo. Next week, we will spend time talking about the balance that must be struck by the district between investment in our higher-profile locations and the ongoing maintenance of our overall inventory.
Next, in 2025, we've also seen advancement in our second priority focused on measurement. The budget books that you've all reviewed in preparation for tonight's discussion and its new layout is a step forward toward the submission for the Government Finance Officers Association Excellence in Budgeting Award. Kudos to Carrie Ross, Jenny Swanson, and their teams for their hard work on this book, which in both print and digital forms provides great insight into the district's overall financial health. Within this priority, I have also been leading our effort toward receiving a CAPRA accreditation. CAPRA stands for Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies, which will help us to benchmark our data collection and measurement against national standards.
Finally, promoting our value has come in the form of advocacy with our legislators at IAPD Day at the Capitol through grant applications and engagement with groups like Greater Peoria Leadership Council and others, and through development of branded marketing pieces. This will continue as we work to complete an economic impact study in 2026.
For this year's presentation, we ask you to think about the Peoria Park District as a living tree, strong, resilient, and deeply connected to the community that it serves. Like each part of a tree, each part of the district plays a unique role in helping the whole grow and thrive. First, we begin with our roots, the deep foundation of the Peoria Park District. The roots are what ground us in our mission and our history. They remind us where we came from, and they hold the strength of generations of care, commitment, and community support. The roots are unseen by most, but they are always at work, drawing nourishment from our past and giving strength to everything above the surface. Our roots include our founding purpose and values that guide us, the historic parks, facilities, and green spaces that form the basis of our district, and the longstanding staff culture and institutional knowledge that keeps us connected to who we are. They also include our obligations and commitments, things like pensions and insurance and compliance, things that ensure the stability of our future and our stewardship of the land and natural resources, the true ecological roots of our mission. Together, these roots are where we come from and what keep us grounded. They are the steady source of strength that allows the Peoria Park District to rise, adapt, and grow year after year, generation after generation. Next, we come to the trunk, the core of our tree, and the strength that holds everything together. The trunk represents the stability and structure of the Peoria Park District. It connects every part of our organization, carrying nourishment from the roots, our foundation, up to the branches and leaves that reach our community. Without a strong trunk, the tree cannot stand, and the rest cannot thrive. Our trunk includes central administration and leadership, the people who ensure that every part of the district moves in the same direction. It includes financial management, human resources, information technology, planning, and daily operations, the systems that keep us organized, efficient, and responsive. It also includes core maintenance and facility management, ensuring that our spaces stay open, safe, and welcoming, as well as public safety and risk management, which provides the stability that allows all of the other parts of our district to flourish. Together, these functions form the solid, steady trunk of our organization, what keeps us upright and resilient through every challenge, season after season. Next, we look to the branches, the parts of our tree that stretch outward into the community. The branches are how the Peoria Park District extends itself to serve people of every age, neighborhood, and interest. They are broad and diverse, each one reaching a different group of residents, yet all connected to the same strong trunk and deep roots that sustain them. Our branches include the recreation and sports programs that keep families active and connected, the arts, culture, and special events that bring our community together, and the environmental and educational programs that inspire learning and stewardship. They also include our partnerships, the collaborations that allow us to reach further and make our impact wider. Together, these branches represent the many ways the district grows outward and connects with people. They remind us that every extension, every new idea, event, or partnership begins with the same foundation, a commitment to building community through parks, recreation, and shared experience. The leaves are what our community sees and feels. They're the most visible sign of the tree's health and of ours. When the roots are strong and the trunk is sturdy, the leaves flourish. For the Peoria Park District, these leaves are the moments of joy and connection that our residents experience every day. They include scholarships and free access programs, community celebrations and outreach events, and the inclusive and welcoming spaces that bring people together every day. The leaves remind us that when our foundational work is strong, the results are vibrant, visible, and shared by all. It's also important to remember that our spaces and places, the physical parks and facilities that shape our district, live in more than one part of this tree, and that's intentional. They are part of our roots when they represent legacy assets, like our historic parks, iconic spaces, and the infrastructure that grounds us. They are part of our trunk when they serve as operational anchors, facilities that we maintain and keep safe for daily use. And they are part of our branches when they become active program spaces, like our golf courses, recreation centers, or nature facilities where people gather, play, and learn. That flexibility shows something powerful, that our facilities aren't static assets. They are in fact living parts of our system, constantly growing, changing, and serving our community in new ways. Like the leaves of a healthy tree, they reflect the care, planning, and purpose that flow from every part of the district beneath them. Just as in nature, our tree, the Peoria Park District, grows within an environment that is often beyond our control. We can't choose the weather, but we can decide how we respond to it. For us, that environment includes the economic conditions and inflation that affect our costs, the weather events and climate impacts that test our parks and facilities, the legislation and funding mandates that shape our operations, and the changing community trends and expectations that influence how people engage with us. While we cannot control these external forces, we can control how we prepare, adapt, and care for the tree itself. That's where care and maintenance comes in. These are the daily actions that keep the district strong and healthy, the steady work that nourishes every part of our organization. This includes developing and supporting our staff, maintaining and reinvesting in our facilities and assets, and fostering a culture of communication, transparency, and trust. It's what allows us to weather challenges, recover from storms, and continue to grow together. In short, care and maintenance is what we do every day to keep our system healthy, ensuring that the Peoria Park District remains both rooted in stability and ready to rise toward the future.
To share an example of our work in this regard, we'd like to ask Jacob Cuban and Kristy Shoemaker to come forward and share a preview of the presentation that they were selected to give at the upcoming IAPD conference in January. In addition to Jacob and Kristy, Jenny Swanson and Brittany Maldenhauer will also present at the conference on social media tactics. Jacob and Kristy, the microphone is yours.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Yep.
As you said, I'm Jacob Cuban, supervisor of park agriculture and recreation maintenance.
Kristy Shoemaker is the supervisor of environmental and cooperative services.
First with basic definition of NOMO spaces that we use. It's the initial step in the process that we're going to explain here tonight. It's an area strategically identified to intentionally decrease routine mowing schedule and eliminate routine pesticide and fertilizer applications. Now, NOMO does not mean maintenance-free. Want to make that clear? And then, uh, these areas are maintained by conducting a rough-cut mow height of six to nine inches and at least one rough-cut mow per year and a maximum of three times per year, avoiding, uh, mowing the native species that come up naturally. So here in this picture, you can see at Donovan, it shows a routinely mowed trail and cross-country course at Donovan with the NOMO area on the right and the restored Tallgrass Prairie on the left. So it kind of shows all phases of the process.
You might ask, why would we want to transition some of our spaces to NOMO? There are various reasons. So financial benefits of doing this. It might have higher initial cost to install a NOMO area or a restoration area, but over time, those maintenance costs are lowered. And those maintenance costs include things like fertilizers, irrigation, herbicide, routine mowing, fuel savings over time, and staff time savings in the long run. In addition to just the pure financial benefits, we also have many ecological benefits of switching to a NOMO area. And these include promoting things like pollinator habitats, creating habitat for other wildlife that could use them, decreased water and herbicide use, storm water retention, including some of those areas where we strategically done around our infrastructure like splash pads, and then human enjoyment of nature. These places are becoming really important for people just to commune.
Okay.
Um, so here are some bullet points on how we identify the potential areas that we can convert. Okay? So we have low use and future use of the areas, which include getting feedback from the community and patron usage, discussions with planning on future use, and historical use. And then staff input from our managers, and then the current use of the areas. For the hard-to-maintain areas, we're talking about, um, like a large slope making routine mowing difficult or potentially unsafe for our staff to mow. Wet spots, um, these might be areas that runoff sits longer or just never really soaks in and dries out. And then also the surrounding land for these areas. So if it's close or near to like a residential area, we take that into consideration. Budgetary concerns. Examples here would be Donovan and Detwiler Riverside, both assisted with reducing operational costs and have enhanced wildlife and passive recreation use. And then for research, we look at historical floral, uh, flora surveys, existing companion species that are currently occurring, soil types in the area, aerial photographs, volunteer native species that pop up in the NOMO areas, and any aesthetic needs based on site use. A perfect example of this just this year was at Newman Golf Course, where we selected a seed mix that was three feet and shorter, and then bloom times varying throughout the season. And then, of course, pollinator presence. For species selection, we look at availability, and then we tend to get that from reputable native seed and plant nurseries. And then we also look at our own homegrown seed mixes, which are collected in our own restorations.
We also evaluate potential NOMO areas based on wildlife habitat potential. So that could be looking at things like, could the area be used by endangered or threatened species? Is this area friendly to pollinators? And other concerns that wildlife interactions might create in the space. We also look at the availability of grant funding to do this because it's not free. But we look at, is there a funding available at the state or local level, at the federal level, or through private donations? For example, the restoration areas in Donovan Park, Robinson Park, and Detwiler Riverside were funded by a grant from the Fish and Wildlife Service. And then lastly, we look at the ability of these spaces to be managed using prescribed fire. So prescribed fire is an efficient and ecologically sound way to maintain these areas long term. So we would evaluate the adjacent land uses and any safety considerations that might exist while creating our management plans for them. Okay. So if you look at this list here, these are areas in the district where NOMO areas and prairie restorations currently exist. So the difference between a NOMO area and a restored prairie is in how the maintenance plans are formed for them and also the species composition of the areas. So a NOMO area can become a restored prairie down the road. They're just kind of waiting on the right conditions, whether that's, you know, the budget, the staffing, the right seed mixes, et cetera, to be able to go the next step and convert a NOMO area into a restoration. Many of our parks and natural spaces also include remnant hill prairies and other native habitats. So the difference between that and what we're talking about here is that those areas are not recreations or restorations, but they consist of the natural flora that has historically existed there.
Okay, so now a little bit about the process. You can see here we have the site prep, install, maintenance, and long-term needs. For the site prep, what I'm going to describe for you is what has been our most successful process for transitioning NOMO areas into the restored areas in our parks. First, we apply herbicide to kill off the existing turf, typically in late summer, usually early fall, so September. Then we conduct any spot treatments necessary through the month of October. And next, we provide a shallow till to enhance our seed-to-soil contact, which is vital to germination of the native seed. And then I just want to reiterate, I guess, that this is our process that we've used, but we're open and we're constantly exploring new ideas and constantly researching different ways to implement this process. But then we wait for the weather to provide us with a two-inch or greater snowfall to sow the native seeds. And then for maintenance, during the first growing season after seeding, we conduct a rough-cut mowing four to six times at that six-to-nine inch height. This is to prevent weeds from going to seed and reduce competition from unwanted plant species. The second growing year, uh, we conduct a rough-cut mowing three to four times. The third growing season, we rough-mow the area just twice. So we reduce the time and commitment to that area while keeping tabs on, uh, some of the stuff we do in future years, which during years four and five, we look at the potential to make use of our prescribed burn team, which Kristy mentioned earlier. And hopefully during that time, if the weather presents the conditions to do so, we'll burn the area for the first time. This allows for establishment of the native species and fuel for the burn. And then some long-term needs. So throughout the first five years and after, we monitor the areas for invasive species and provide the appropriate control methods. And then we also conduct the prescribed burns, monitor for invasive species down the road, and implement ecological surveys. And then we also do public outreach and education. So here is a direct comparison for you to see. The picture on the left is, uh, from 2017. It was an old fairway at Donovan that I took. And didn't know it at the time, but we ended up transitioning that into a restored prairie, which you can see on the right, that was taken just a couple days ago out at Donovan. So you can kind of see the high-intense turf right there, eight years separate. Yeah, this helped decrease operational costs at Donovan while also enhancing the area for wildlife and passive recreation.
So lastly, here's a photograph of the prairie restoration at Tonny Oaks. So prior to 2012, this area was used as a horse pasture by the previous owner. Today, the site is flourishing as a tall grass prairie. It's home to a many species of birds and insects, and it serves as an area for us to collect seeds of native plants. So the seeds that we collect here are used in other restoration areas across the district, which saves us money and ensures proper species selection is used. So with that, that kind of concludes our portion, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, bird seeds with the snowfall?
That's tended to be the best performing germination in the spring after following that. So one of the things I've found is if you have snow cover, you get a lot less, uh, birds eating this expensive seed. Um, and also the freezing and thawing into that soil really helps get that seed-to-soil contact. Uh, Glen Oak would be down at the base. We did like a, that was kind of experimental, uh, where the old tennis courts were. We did half prairie, half NOMO there. What were the other locations? Bradley, uh, I know there's one up at Upper Dog Park, kind of down, yep, when you turn down the hill right there. Yep. Upper Main Street, where Shuffleboard used to be. And then, what's that? Oh, and we did an attempt on Savannah. That was one of the things, we did a different, uh, seed application. I don't think it went too well this year, but I'm hoping that maybe some stuff will sprout up next year. We did a direct till on that. We didn't kill anything off. We were kind of trialing a no-till, uh, seed method. So I think there was a little too much competition from the turf grass that was not killed off. And Treewin, uh, down at the very base of the hill, kind of, yeah, very, very low. And we actually did a seeding also off of Treewin, off of Utah. That one came up really good.
So, you're right. Does your roughback mowing help keep the invasive species away?
Yeah.
Is sufficient to do that, or assuming to come back? What else do you need to pull these invasive species? I would imagine.
It is, definitely. And I would say probably the quicker we move on moving NOMO areas to the seeded, there's less of that, having to do that year to year. So it's a little bit easier to do the initial install. But it's just not real, you know, to do that to every space. But yeah, the rough-cut mow, uh, we do that on an annual basis, and we tend to rotate the areas too. So not every NOMO space gets mowed every year. Tend to rotate things. So like at Donovan, half of it will get mowed this year, and then the other half of the NOMO space will get mowed next year. And we do that to give opportunity to let those volunteer native species to pop up. And then.
To kind of answer your question, there might be some instances where if there was like woody trees and stuff that were growing in there that we might have to go in and cut and just like stump spray those species in a select area, and we're not like broadcasting herbicide. We're not like broadcasting herbicide over them.
Correct.
So do you rely on volunteers to do that?
Yeah, volunteers and staff. It's a combination. So if herbicide was involved, staff would be using that. But we do have volunteer workdays to help with some of that cutting.
We take anybody who wants to help. Yeah, yeah, it's typically a three-point on a larger tractor. So like our seasonal like teamsters or assistants are doing it most of the time. But they work with their managers, work with me, and know the management practice of that particular area.
When did you all start the Nomo concept?
So it originated when we transitioned Donovan Park from golf course to a park. And that kind of spawned an initiative of green space modification. That was where we did, just as Jacob and Christie described, where we identified some low-use areas in parks that we could start to transition to Nomo. What we learned through the Donovan Park process, to what Jacob just alluded to, is you have a select number of years before you really start having invasives try to take over that space. So the sooner you can identify soil composition and what native plants can thrive in that space, the better off you are to transition it budgetarily and staff-wise you can do it.
So for the spring chickens on this board, what was that timeline?
2016 and 2017 is when we started incorporating Nomo's into our other parks and thinking about transitioning them to restoration areas.
Got it.
So, and then we have, as we've had success with that, we've certainly expanded that because we also see the opportunity for education, interpretation, and a different way to experience our parks for patrons.
And so relevant to the discussion tonight, from a financial standpoint, what's been the financial impact year over year in terms of freeing up the, freeing up costs to potentially allocate to other portions of our budget?
That's a great question. We haven't done any specific year-over-year measurements. As they described, some of the spaces are so new, we haven't started to realize some of the cost savings yet. These are upfront costs. You kind of start up here and then you go down after year three, four, five, where your maintenance is very, very minimal. But again, it's, there's cost savings, there's staff time savings, and there's ecological benefit. And we see also patron experience benefit too.
Perfect, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Trustee Sierra, one of the areas that we can directly measure is in how much seed we collect because we know how much prairie seeds cost to buy on the open market. And it's thousands of dollars if you're looking at acreage to do that with. So currently, up at Tony Oaks in the office, we have like three 55-gallon trash cans full of prairie seeds that our volunteers have harvested this year. So our land steward does do some calculations on what the market value of that is after it's all processed.
I appreciate that. And you know, one thing that I've learned since joining, especially in this budget process, it's really easy for us to get into the operational standpoint, but I try to maximize this time to talk about the financial impact. And so I'd be interested to know, you know, what that cost savings has looked like year over year and how we've been able to benefit it. It's not something that needs to be necessarily followed up on, but just, no pun intended, planting that for a future conversation.
I think an important note is that it does allow us to allocate our resources differently. That's part of that care and maintenance of our tree, if you will, is that it doesn't necessarily mean that you have fewer people on your team. It means that those people are now assigned to tasks that otherwise might not have been done.
Absolutely.
Right, that you didn't get to on the list of to-dos. So it changes our effectiveness and our efficiency. And it also, I remember sitting in the seat and having these conversations about mowing, even when it made dust, right? Because you were supposed to mow every seven days and all those things, right? There was just a rigor to that. And this recognizes our changing environment. It recognizes our role as an environmental steward. And there's a lot to be said for spaces in our parks that are low-use, turning them into these education models for people to understand what they can do in their own spaces to help to support different wildlife or to even just change how they have to mow their own yard.
I absolutely agree, Emily. And I think, you know, that's the benefit of how you all approached the budget. This time, we made it a lot more comprehensive, user-friendly, and digestible for how we are reallocating resources across the district. It's also like really exciting for me, which like in 2022, you'd remember when I created that urban forestry proposal because I quickly learned that the Southern District hadn't no designated protect, protected space deemed through the state of Illinois. And I quickly learned that due to the development that has occurred in the Southern District, there's just some things that we can't do. But there are some ways that you, as a staff, have been very innovative in creating or reintroducing that native preserve and forestry. And so that's really where my interest comes from is, you know, oftentimes, we are pulling in the same direction, and we continue to get innovative as well.
Absolutely. Trustee Silver, did you have a question?
I actually had the same question that Mr. Silver had. And it seems like we parallel a lot of times, and he always beats me to the punch. But so that's, so that's good.
We'll have to start on the other side of the circle next time.
Zacy species and how we get rid of those, whether or not we have to hand-cut them, or do you just do it with the mowing? You know, the mulberry trees out there, you probably have to go and whack those babies out, as I would guess.
Just like in your own yard. Yep, those things grow everywhere.
So, but and the other thing is, I just got a reminder that we should turn on our microphones. And so any of us who are talking, and I have, I'm one of the worst as far as doing that. So I will keep my eye on it, you know, to make sure that I do it and everybody else does it. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I happened to be at Tony Oaks, maybe it was last year when I'm going, what are you all doing? And they were collecting seeds. So it's sort of, it's interesting. It's a very people-intensive process, but everybody seemed to be having a good time because the weather was great. Is there like a master plan for the, over the next X years? We want X acres? Or and how far along are we? Or is it just sort of evolve as we go along?
That's a great question. Right now, we don't have any milestones set as far as more expansion. I think Christie and Jacob's and the rest of their team emphasis right now is there are still some areas that we need to get back under control and fully restore. And so our focus, both with time, resources, needs to be in those areas before we really start to expand. Now, as we evolve and we see uses in our areas evolve, we see opportunities for education and interpretation for us to share that with the community. We may prioritize differently, but right now, it's really to restore some of the areas that have yet to be to the standard that we want them to be right now.
Okay, thanks.
Just one other quick question. On the different types of seeds you've been harvesting, is there a plan to sell those in the marketplace or to offer those to constituents that might want to buy those types of things? I guess that's a...
Yeah, so we don't have a plan to sell seeds at this time. There's some like Department of Agriculture regulations that you would have to get in line with before you could do something like that. We would like to eventually get to a spot where we can grow plants of our native plants to either use in the parks or maybe support Luthie's Plant Sale kind of thing. I don't know that that'll happen this year, but we definitely are using those seeds throughout the district in current restorations.
And then how about sharing with any other governmental agencies? If the City of Peoria wanted to do some prairie development, is that something that, you know, can you do without those kind of restrictions on it? Or is it just selling that's an issue?
I think it's more of a selling and making sure that, you know, seeds are pure and there's no weed seeds and stuff like that. So there might be opportunities if there was other agencies or, you know, organizations that might want to use it. I don't know if we have enough capacity at this point to have large quantities, but potentially if there were some of those pocket pollinator areas, we could help out.
Thank you very much.
I just had one other thing to add, which isn't really, I guess, related to Nomo, but maybe kind of underutilized green spaces. I don't know if there, or if we have ever considered, I want to say urban farming, but I'm not necessarily talking about farming like acreages. But utilizing our land for food-bearing plants, has that been explored at, I guess, any level, either within our own district or just nationally?
So we have a number of acres that are in crop production currently in some of our rural spaces. We have talked about and tried to create some models where we would start some fruit and nut trees. Specifically, kind of our pilot project we had identified was in John Gwynne Park, where the tennis courts used to be. Right now, some of our challenges are just the resources we need, mainly water, to be able to do that in an effective way. And then care of maintenance. But I know Jacob and I have dreamed on that quite a bit. And also because there's an opportunity for education in the community and with the Leska Hinton right there, that opportunity to show kids where food comes from. So we have, we have thought about that. And I believe we'll find a way to incorporate that into our plans in the future.
Good to hear, thank you.
It occurs to me that prairie restoration also offers a valuable opportunity for education of the public. And so if you're not actively advertising, maybe you want to think about advertising opportunities to volunteer in prairie restoration or have it actually as a feature, not just anybody who wants to come and volunteer.
Melinda just got, she waved her hands back there, and I looked back there at the same time. So that is a part of our volunteer recruitment. It's a part of our monthly newsletter to let people know what that regular restoration schedule is to support that.
And this year, I'll come up and say...
Yes, please.
This year for the seeds, specifically for Tony Oaks and the seed collecting, we worked with Jacob Moll, and he's had several workdays. I mean, we've done them monthly for several weeks. Our last one is next Wednesday. But we've had close to 200 volunteers come through and do seed collecting. We've had groups from Art Inc., groups from Caterpillar. And then last week, Christie and her staff helped wrangle 150 kids from Dunlap Middle School who came through and did seed collecting and education. So there definitely is an educational part to it and to the community. And this is the second year that Dunlap has done that for us.
That's awesome.
So they are definitely getting in there. But this is the first year that we've had so many volunteers. I would say we've probably had close to about 200 volunteers this summer, fall alone, coming in at Tony Oaks specifically, doing the seed collecting. And if you haven't done it before, it's a very relaxing and very mind-calming activity. You just go, pop off these little things, put them in a little bag.
I'll be there next Wednesday.
So enjoy seed collecting. It's a great, great activity.
I will say quickly that that's a testament to what happens when we do have the resources to make our volunteer manager now full-time again because she had been part-time since COVID. So being able to have her full-time resource makes a huge impact in our ability to do those sorts of things. Also, having Jacob Moll as a full-time land steward to be able to literally steward those kinds of activities, that's when you start to see those kinds of things literally take seed. You're welcome.
No pun intended.
Okay, thank you. Jenny was worried about her quantity of puns. Okay, all right. Adopted policy requires that the district adopt a balanced budget for all funds with annual revenues sufficient to pay all expected annual expenditures and/or revenues required to comply with the district's fund balance and reserve policy. Our team relies on several foundational focuses when we build a plan, as we have here. Our budget process, which begins annually in late July, is built upon the following three tenets. First, institutional knowledge and expertise. The district is fortunate to have a leadership team made up of many long-tenured staff who are leaders in our region and beyond in their respective fields. These experts are well-versed in the daily operations of their programs or places while also being willing to consider new ways to do business when necessary, like we just talked about. That knowledge forms a strong basis for the budget presented tonight. This knowledge, combined with an unwavering commitment to community, is the backbone for our work to ensure that programming is available and accessible in the face of barriers. This commitment shows in both the fees and charges scheduled that was shared for review as part of our pre-presentation discussions and in our bond-issue proposal, which was also reviewed last month. Further, it has to be honored that much of what the district is able to offer to our communities is for free. And where it isn't, the district's scholarship program is leaps and bound beyond those found in other districts and helps to ensure access for all. This commitment does result in increased subsidies in some locations and programs, but we know that both our staff and our trustees believe that this is essential if we are to continue to impact the vibrancy and vitality of the community that we serve. Next, realistic budgeting includes both revenue projections and responsible expense control on both sides of the lever, on the ledger, excuse me. While this budget does plan for some modest growth in staffing levels, this budget also prioritizes being competitive in a challenging labor market. And last, but certainly not least, this budget promotes both efficiency and effectiveness. Our team has learned a lot in the last few years about ways to use staff and program resources to their fullest. Investment in technology and in our workforce capacity highlight this emphasis.
This chart provides a summary of total revenues by fund. When comparing the 2025 proposed budget and the 2026 proposed budget, the district is projecting a 7% increase in total revenues. For a governance-level review of this change, let's examine the 2026 proposed budgeted revenues by category. This chart shows by category the budgeted revenues. The budget document provides more historical data for revenues by category, but for tonight's exercise, I'll focus on the 2026 projections. I'd like to highlight a couple of items for your consideration. First, property taxes and replacement tax comprise 40% of the district's overall revenue and in total are projected to increase 6% to $22.1 million. This growth is due to an increase in property tax assessed valuation and a higher property tax levy for the payment of district bond debt. Conversely, based on the state's forecast for replacement tax revenue, the district is projecting a 7% decrease in replacement tax compared to 2025's revised budget. The district's second-largest funding source is fees and charges. It's projected to increase 10% to $16.6 million. The district is projecting modest fee and charges growth at the Riverplex memberships, zoo special events, and golf memberships and cart fees. But the primary driver of the 10% increase is the new revenue stream from the Golf Learning Center Entertainment Golf Facility soon to open. Thirdly, note that the internal reimbursements category is generated through the district's cost allocation system, which allocates district support costs to each facility or program. In other words, this is revenue and expense activity posted between the district departments. It's not external sources of revenue or expenses, which is why the internal reimbursements and internal services are equal to one another. Finally, interest income is projected to decrease 27% compared to 2025's revised budget due to expected lower Federal Reserve target funds rate. Now, let's review the expense side of the ledger. This chart provides the expenses in total by fund. The expenses in total by fund are expected to increase 7%. In the next slide, we'll review a breakdown of the 2026 budgeted expenses by category. Again, I'm going to highlight just a few things, and then we can pause for questions. Because the district's operations are highly personnel-driven, wages and benefits represent 45% of the district's expense budget. It's by far the largest category. As a result, increases in personnel costs are among the most immediate and significant financial pressures that the district could face if it's not prudently managed. In 2026, wage and benefit expenses are projected to support 343 full-time equivalent staff, an increase of 22 FTEs compared to the prior year. The increased staffing levels drive up both wage and bike expenses. And most notably, the rising cost of healthcare is impacting the district with an estimated $879,000 increase in health benefit expenses compared to 2025's revised budget. In 2026, the district is not proposing to increase planned deductibles or planned selections to mitigate the health insurance increase, but management will be monitoring this and the market for health insurance in the coming year. Next, as noted previously, the internal service and internal reimbursement categories are comprised of expense and revenue activity posted between the departments. It's not external revenue or expenses. At a facility or program level, the internal transfer accounting activity helps us to cost-allocate district applicable support to specific facilities and specific programs, providing a more accurate representation of what a facility or program costs. But when you roll it up to a district-wide level, the internal transfer activity is net to zero, and it's not beneficial for a really government-wide review. Thirdly, debt service expenses, which are funded by property taxes, are anticipated to increase 13%. This is due to an increase in the amount of bond principal the district plans to pay off in 2026, which will lower the district's bond and interest expenses in the future. It's also noteworthy that in 2026, the district plans to use nearly $2.4 million to support various capital... various capital and reserve-funded projects. Most notably, these include, in the general fund, reserves will be used for environmental sustainability initiatives and Glen Oak Park capital improvement projects that were previously reserved and designated by the board. Donations and grant funds will be used for improvements at Mark Woodlands Park and Grandview Drive Pavilion relocation, and enhancements at the Peoria Playhouse and the Peoria Zoo. Paving and lighting funds, fund reserves are proposed to be used for park roadway and parking lot improvements. And the police fund reserves will be used for special capital projects for the police division that were previously designated by the board.
As noted earlier, the 2025 revised budget projects 321 FTEs and is projected to grow to 343 FTEs for the 2026 proposed budget. The primary drivers of this increase are the addition of one full-time position to support the implementation of software applications that will improve the district's ability to make data-driven decisions and an increase in part-time staff to support the bays at Golf Learning Center.
Excuse me. That last chart, that was expenses?
That's number of full-time equivalents. Yes.
Oh, okay. Full-time. I got you.
No problem.
Ultimately, at the end of each fiscal year, the district's revenues and expenses net to fund creating positive or negative impacts to fund balance. This chart reflects each fund's balance from the 2024 audited financials through the proposed 2026 budget. Note that in 2026, the golf fund is proposing a $113,000 net positive operating budget due to the increased revenue generated by the Golf Learning Center Entertainment Golf amenity. The district is proposing to retain this net gain in the golf fund to leverage for future golf needs. Conversely, the Hisra Fund is proposing a $71,000 net negative budget in order to use existing fund balances to pay for capital improvements at their facility. Additionally, you'll see that in total, the district's fund balance is expected to decrease from $40.7 million from 2024 to $37.8 million by the end of 2026. This decrease is due to the projected use of fund balance for various expenses and capital projects that were discussed in the previous slide. You may ask, does this decrease in fund balance mean the district is in poor financial condition? Actually, the answer is no. The fund balance and reserve policy that's been adopted by this board establishes a reserve target for each fund based on the fund's budgeted expenses to ensure the funds have sufficient reserves to absorb losses when a rainy day comes. If fund position exceeds the minimum target, the board may choose to use excess fund balance to support specific, one-time capital or mission-driven needs. So in this case, the district is actually strategically utilizing fund balances while still retaining sufficient reserves. The chart shown here reflects the combined fund balance of the general fund and the recreation type funds. Due to the scope and interconnectivity of these funds, their combined position act as a barometer for the district's operating health and helps ensure the district is prudently managing fund balance across its core operations. Note that the 2026 projection shows the three bars fund balance exceeds the blue dotted lines reserve target by about $2.8 million. In other words, barring an unforeseen rainy day, the district's core operating funds are projected to remain financially healthy. Relative to our overall financial position, three key takeaways from the information shared so far. Number one, we continue to be in a near-term healthy financial position. Number two, taxes, the district's primary revenue source, are projected to increase due to continued historic year-over-year growth in the property tax equalized assessed valuation, not because of growth in replacement tax or access to new tax revenue streams. The district needs to remain conscientious that if EAV growth trend slows or decreases, the district would need to consider what negative impacts may happen on operations.
In recent years, we have highlighted planned capital projects as part of our fund reviews. However, this year with the large-scale projects contemplated in our strategic plan and as part of regular asset management, we asked that this review be held until next week's capital planning review presentation.
So before we start fund review, do you have any questions?
I do. Just as a matter of fact, is there any way, because I know we are all flipping through our budget books up here, and I'm keeping up, but I don't know if everyone's keeping up. Is there a way that staff can make reference to the budget book pages as we go through it?
Sure.
Perfect. I think that'd just be helpful for everyone around the horseshoe. So we just went through a lot. And that, so one thing, if we can go back to the takeaways, the high-level takeaways, thank you. So Carrie, one thing that I want to underscore, and Emily and I spoke about this leading up to the budget, I think the term near-term is very important to what you said, especially as it makes reference to the EAV. Because year-over-year, even leading into this year, we didn't even project an increase in EAV. We steered on the side of caution for that in our last budget conversation. Am I recalling correctly?
We budgeted on a 6% EAV growth for 2025 and we're budgeting on a 6% growth for 2026.
That was a conservative budget though, right?
Yes. In, in this year, the increase, we budgeted on 6%. The increase for our district was like 6.4, almost 6.5% increase. So it was, it was a little closer. The year before that, we budgeted on 6 and the increase was about 8. So we were more conservative in that year than we were for this current year.
And it's fair to say that you've warned us to keep our eyes on that year-over-year.
Yeah. Thank you. That is fair to say.
And the reason why I bring that up is because as it pertains to the near-term health, EAV reference is extremely important on that. And then secondly, our capital projects are important as it pertains to that as well. And so, you know, speaking with Emily leading up to this budget, I had noticed that the overall budget was going to decrease. And I asked Emily this question. I'm interested to hear your take. Do you think that it's fair to say that based on our capital demands, that the trend of a decreased budget is something that we should keep an eye on?
So I, I don't know that I'd say necessarily the trend of a decreased budget. There will be strategic decisions that this board is going to have to make in the upcoming number of months as we approach what we've talked about for some period of time, a number of large capital project needs across the district. Right now, the district is taxing for property tax payment of bond debt at a relatively low level. Now, it's a significant portion of what our tax levy total is. So in your books, page 26 and page 27, if you had looked at your property tax information and then page 28, page 26 shows you that EAV chart. You can see the year-over-year increases. I, you know, if I went back more years, this, this kind of trajectory is, it's not. I don't think you'd have to go back probably 30 years to find that kind of trajectory in EAV. So to your point of, you know, what is EAV going to be and we need to keep our eye on that, I agree. On 27, though, to your question about just debt and capital and the way it impacts the taxpayers, on 27, I chart for you the estimated property tax rate and I show you the orange portion of the bars is what the operating levies are. And then just, just for debt service, we're projecting that it would be 0.238 of the levy. Maybe, maybe the better thing to look at to get an idea of how much debt service is, is on 28, page 28, 2026 budget, debt service, it's about 28.71% of what we expect to property tax levy. So all that said, if the board's decision is that we're going to issue a large amount of debt, we're going to have to pay that debt back somehow. How are we going to have to pay that debt back? Options to do that, if you want to keep the property tax levy steady or level, is that it's going to eat into our other capital improvement needs. Or we're going to look to increase the tax levy. So I would say it is an item that we will have to consider as a district, what route we want to go and where are high and low, like where are min and max thresholds for what we want to do in that strategy.
Emily made the same points and that's why I wanted to bring it up. Again, not having an opportunity to talk to you, but putting it on this board's radar that we are going to have to have a conversation, especially within the next 12 months, based on guidance and stewardship from the staff, of course, as to how, when we issue that debt, but also meet the capital demands that we've, you know, outlined under President Johnson's leadership. And so, you know, that's just something that I took away in this fiscal section. I just want to note quickly that going back to the capital needs, I do still think that it is a mistake that our board does not include the Riverplex into that, bless you, into the master facilities strategic plan that we have identified. And so that's something that, of course, not during this budget, but during the planning of all these capital needs that we have, that I hope that we take a serious look on.
So that, so it's not included in the strategic plan for the next three years, but it will be a part of those capital conversations that will start next week as we look at what our, our capital needs are over the next five to seven years.
Yeah, and that'll come through in our capital improvement. So I'm, I'm well aware of that, but I think it needs to be in that three-year plan that's been provided and adopted by this board. And so I just wanted to make note of that as well, that I hope that we can take a serious look at the Riverplex as well.
So I would encourage everybody, just quickly, sorry, trustee Montez, to go to the website. We sent you all the link to the digital version of this document. When you go online and you go to those pages of the book where the charts are, they are dynamic. Is that the word?
Yeah, they're dynamic. So the software we're using this year for charts and graphs, to get them to fit to pages, sometimes they don't, the resolution doesn't allow for all the numbers that you may want to see. If you go to the publicly published version of the book, you can actually hover and see more like actual number information. So just.
So that's, it's a really good exercise to just get in there and play with those charts a little bit. Everything that we just covered in that, that chunk is a part of the fiscal overview tab, which is ultimately where you should spend, quite honestly, the bulk of your time as trustees, as you look at the overall financial health of our organization. Then the rest of this is about allocation of resources, which is absolutely an important part of your role. But if your job is to steward, and I argue that it is, the overall health of this organization, your, your time is best spent in that fiscal overview tab. Do you have a question before we go on?
Oh, yes. So can we go back to the revenue and expenses by fund page?
Maybe. This one? No?
No.
One more.
You want, which one? Revenue or?
That was right. The revenue. Is it, is there a total summary at the bottom?
This is.
Like there is on these sheets here.
This is just this, it's split on one slide, so.
Yeah, so that's revenue. This is expenses.
And then as far as the, the net that you see on like this kind of page, on the next slide, next, there we go. So the net is in the columns of the projections.
Okay. So for 2026, there is a surplus. And I'm not used to seeing surpluses in budgets. I'm used to seeing net zero. Can you explain the surplus?
You go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think Carrie talked about the fact that certainly because of the Golf Learning Center, we do anticipate an influx of revenue into that fund. If you look in your fiscal, fiscal overview, if you look at fund position, you'll see that golf fund is one of those funds that is not at the targeted reserve amount. So it is not reserved.
That's page 35 of your book. Sorry, Emily.
No, thank you. So it is not reserved at a level that we feel comfortable with. So rather than allocating taxes somewhere else or wiggling that and then putting ourselves in potentially a, a difficult position because there are not those, as Carrie said, those rainy day funds sitting there in golf, we felt it was important to use this opportunity to build that golf fund. We also know that with the opening of the Golf Learning Center, that does not end our capital needs in golf. There are significant capital needs and so we are building and, and if you will, we're building a nest egg separate from bond issue to start to address some of those funds because of what we know is coming. And so it didn't, there was no cut, a corresponding cut somewhere else in the budget to make that happen. It was because of anticipated revenues. As we have all talked as part of our strategy sessions, anticipated revenues are just those. Until they, until they show up and people start, if you build it, they will come and still they, until they start coming, there is some uncertainty to what those numbers will look like. So that does build into our budget, some safety net for us if we do have some challenges as we move through this or a difficult weather that doesn't allow us to meet those projections, which are conservative, but nonetheless projections because we don't have historical data about how this will perform.
Just being part of an agency for a number of years, I've never seen anything but a zero, net, net zero.
Sure.
Are we allowed, our agency is allowed to build surpluses or project surpluses?
The fund balance policy, which I.
It actually, yeah.
Yeah, it, it does allow for it.
It actually almost requires us to think about getting those funds to that position.
But are we allowed to project surplus?
Yes. The fund balance policy that was approved three years ago does allow for it.
It actually asks us to look at, at the close of a year, those, those funds that are not in an appropriate reserve position and propose a strategy to all of you to get that fund into a properly reserved position. In this case, this is our proposal, one of them.
Well, I mean, and we'll probably talk about more about this during the, we get to golf. But it seems that when we shift from providing services to making money, our priorities can change. The focus of how we spend and how we cut and how we provide those services, if, if we're trying to make money, we may be cutting services to save that money to make sure that we hit it. So that's going to be my concern in this discussion.
That's fair. I would also encourage you to look at key proposed changes when we get there. There are not proposed cuts to our service levels in order to achieve that. There is just a recognition that that is, this is unlike anything we've ever done to build a facility like that and to create an opportunity to generate revenue to support a fund in the way that this is. So this is uncharted territory for all of us.
I mean, this is the starting point.
Yeah.
It's true.
Yeah.
And that when you start to miss your goal, you start to do things to make your goal. And that's going to be, you know, how that, to me, that may impact how we provide our services. And so that's why I'm going to see, view this.
Yeah. I know when I first came on the board, golf was in a deep hole and some critical decisions were made. So I certainly want us to avoid that. So I actually appreciate that this thinking ahead is, is happening, you know, since this is a really critical year that we're going into with, with golf. And this idea of having balanced revenue expenses in a budget for a nonprofit is always the conundrum for a not, nonprofit. Because if you have no margin, you may have no mission. So it's, it's really a balancing act, you know, in terms of my view. You have to be able to have some cushion because you don't really know what's going to happen in the future, so.
Well, you know, I would only point out that in '24, according to the sheet, we had over a million dollar surplus. And this year, we're projecting a half million dollar surplus. Is it necessary to project a surplus in golf when we're already running surpluses?
I, I mean, for points made, I'd argue that it is. I think that also, you know, we, we as a board have to be careful about the narratives that we put because like Emily's point out, we're not talking about cutting programs. We're actually talking about adding more programs. And in addition to, I think that there's light in what you're saying though, being that you do have. that you do have that institutional experience with the Park District. Think none of us would disagree that the level of service probably is not where it was when you were here as a, a staff member, but it isn't to say that the team has not offered some very innovative ways for us to increase our footprint. At least that's what I get from when I hear your comments about our services. Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
I, I think you're, you're fair. I mean, it's, it's, it's point taken here.
Okay. No, and I just, I just want to make that point because I, I know I hear, I hear that often, right? The Park District has always been vibrant, always had vast services, but I don't, I just want to be careful about us saying that we're cutting or potentially cutting because that is.
Well, I'm not saying that at all.
Perfect.
I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that the mentality changes when you start to focus on making money versus providing services.
But I don't think it's a focus of making money, but just.
Well, it's a surplus that's projected.
About protecting.
But it's about something we've never done.
Yeah.
I encourage you to look at page 35. If you look at fund position, that's in that fiscal section that I asked you to focus on. If you look at 34, 35, 36, I believe, you will see those fund positions. And I encourage you to look at our fund balance policy, which does require us to have, have each fund be in a position to meet those reserve expectations. So it's certainly a larger conversation to be had, but in this situation, what, what you will see in our key proposed changes when we get there is, is absolutely no, no cut to programming. And we are about to open a facility that will change the way people think about golf in Peoria Park District. And that's a huge opportunity for all of us. So this is meant to be an investment in that opportunity because ultimately we are changing our reputation when it comes to golf in our community with this facility, which means we have to meet those expectations. And that means continued investment in not only Golf Learning Center, but in our larger golf system.
And understand, my, I'm not saying we're cutting, I'm not accusing anybody of cutting any kind of service. I, I think it, it's just a shift in mentality when you start to project.
Sure. I will add to, I, I can absolutely appreciate the concern, right? We, we need to fulfill a mission. In some ways, I, I think the golf fund, because of the addition of entertainment golf and what it's projected to do the, to the fund, in part puts the fund kind of back to where it was probably 30, 40 years ago at one time. So the, the golf fund in its very origin, and you may have recollections of Steve, it was created as an enterprise fund of the Park District. With being created as an enterprise fund, the intent was that it would operate like a business and its P and L would also support capital type expenditures. For numbers of years, it was able to do that until it was no longer able to do that. And it no longer operated like an enterprise fund, but operated like a standard recreation type tax-supported activity. So this is, I think, a balance as we go into next year of what is this fund as we go forward? The P and L projection for the entertainment golf is, like Emily said, it's a projection. The $113,000 net positive that we're proposing, given that, you know, we, we're trying to save for a rainy day, that's only 2% of what the total expense projection is of the fund. This year in '25 revised budget, you have in your books that the fund was projecting when they ran numbers in August, they were projecting to beat budget by about 17,000. Now, beating budget was a net zero. That was before we had 90 days without any rain. They're going to lose money this year. They're going to lose money probably to the tune of $113,000. So just how quickly that swings in that fund, I can absolutely appreciate the projection of, of, of a positive number is concerning from a recreation, mission-driven amenity service offering. But I think, given this fund and its position right now, I feel like it's, it's a, a conservative and responsible approach.
And as an enterprise fund, its job is in fact to make money.
Yeah. Well, you know, it would be easy to mistake what I'm saying here in, because I'm really excited about the, you know, I'm, I think Greg and his team has done a fantastic job in building up the course and then going in an innovative way. And I think everybody's looking forward to seeing this. So, you know, but in the back of my mind, that's, I have, I still have that thought.
I think it's fair, Steve, because I know Alex, Emily and I have had commentary on Carrie, right? Where it's like, we are a government institution, we have to serve the people, right? But we're also in a competitive field when it comes to, to recreation. And so that's something that I've had to balance in budget conversation is to what extent do we focus on a profit? Because at the end of the day, our job is to serve the people. So, you know, be clear that I hear you and I understand where you're coming from.
And I just see this as trying to be as cost-effective as we possibly can and plan for those kinds of rainy days that we might have, as well as being competitive-based. I mean, if we have a competitive-based golf program and we run it a surplus and we have some profits, that money could be invested back into the golf courses in the different things that you need to have. So I think, again, we're not talking about running it for a profit as a, as profit type of, you know, organization, but it is trying to make sure that we have enough profit to be able to absorb those kinds of costs that we need to absorb for the long run. And so, so I understand what you're saying, but I think there are some new dynamics here. And as we go more into trying to have these, you know, private, public partnerships where we're going to be looking at driving some profit, where we can use those monies for other types of things, it's not a bad thing for us to do, so.
And I do understand all, all that point, you know, the saving grace frankly is that the money is going to, there is a plan to put the money back into the golf course. But I, I still get stuck on that, so I'm still going to be stuck on that.
And there, and there are things that are needed out there, as we all know. So, you know, it's one of those things, as you go through it, and I know this is one of the things that is being looked at with many, you know, people, is what do we have to do to keep ourselves competitive as far as what our rates are to the public, but also, also what does our properties look like and what do they offer to people? And I think that's where we have that balance we need to be able to strike here.
Okay. Emily, you like to move on?
Yes.
Well, can I just say thank you for providing this sheet?
I'm, I'm sorry, President Johnson. I don't know if any other trustees have comments or questions about this section, but I agree with Emily where this is where I spent the bulk of my time. So I definitely have some more comments and questions if that's fine with everyone.
That's what we hear.
Perfect. So am I? Am I understanding correctly on page 33 that there's no net change or just overall fund change in the Riverplex in terms of what's proposed for '26 versus '25?
Correct. Correct, sorry, my mic wasn't on.
And why did we not project for any increase in that fund or just an improved performance?
So we're not, we're not budgeting. So you can see in the third, second column over for Riverplex, the, the revised budget that staff has submitted for 2025 projects that they will beat budget essentially, they will net positive 314,000. They are proposing, we are proposing to the board for 2026, a net zero budget. So that, because it's a net revenue zero for '26, the, the fund balance stays the same. We're not trying to build that fund balance.
And, and that's what I was, I'm happy that we beat the budget this year, right? But, you know, I continue to hear all these great things about a growing membership, about this dual partnership that we have with the YMCA. I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, based on those trends that have been consistently communicated, why aren't we, you know, looking at maybe a revenue situation?
Can you go to page 133, please?
Thank you.
Page 133.
133. So that is the Riverplex Fund. That is it. So when you look at surplus, if you go about, I don't know, quarter, quarter of the way down the page, you're going to see tax support. So I would encourage you to look at what their 2025 revised tax support is versus their 2026 projected. You are seeing progress being made in that fund. I would also note that that includes a reduction, an anticipated reduction in the mission fund from OSF. So they were already behind the eight ball, if you will, to come up with that extra money. And they are still showing a better performance in their proposed budget for '26. They are making progress. I think that an expectation of going from $670,000 of tax support in 2024, I mean, that's, that's actually, I would think remarkable to move to that in 2026 proposed. So you, we are on the trajectory that you're looking for. We have to be realistic about the time that it takes. Will we ever get to zero? I doubt it because of all the things that are happening in that fund. But certainly they are making improvements about their overall position and their total per, per person subsidy is, I mean, it is, it is certainly markedly better from their '25 budget to their '26 proposed.
And the decreased subsidy is based on the overperformance of that fund this year, I, I would say?
Yes. Well, they've performed in budgeting, they've overperformed 2025.
Correct.
And so as they project into '26, they're using their overperformance as a launching pad into '26, which drives down that tax subsidy.
Yeah.
And then on the fund balance portion, so back on page 36, right, the Riverplex Fund, when you look at their fund balance history in the last few years, they are, they're right at the mark of hitting their reserve target. So we are, I, I think, boards, staff management, we're all very happy with what's been happening at the Riverplex and we want to support that to continue. But the facility is not a net zero, no tax need facility at this point, yes.
So in other words, we're being both strategic and conservative on our budgeting, right?
That's the name of the game.
And, and I understand why we, I mean, we definitely need to celebrate the decreased subsidy, right? We're freeing up dollars to use across elsewhere in the district. But, you know, again, based on all the very positive narrative, which again remains positive, I was just wondering why the, the fund is being proposed to perform where it is now. So I appreciate that. One thing that Emily did mention, and it was one of my questions, was that on one of these pages, we'll see a $100,000 decrease in the OSF Mission Fund to support the Riverplex. And so thank God that we are performing so well because, I mean, it's a great indication as to membership and partnership, right? But it's also something that we have to be long-term strategic in if that mission grant were to continue to decrease, right?
And I think it will over time. That was the expectation on their part was to help us in our transition. And so we are certainly at this point meeting them where they are. As people return to the downtown, we are seeing our membership numbers increase. And we will talk about those, those things as we get to that portion of the budget review. But ultimately, when you have a facility that has the Aquaplex and, and, and some of the, the way that that building is configured, configured, the operational expenses to operate that building are a challenge. And we have to be realistic about that. The things that we ask that building and that facility and that team to do is so varied and it has multiple personalities, if you will. It is not an enterprise fund, right? The way that we operate that, there are parts of it that are and there are parts of it that are not. And so a tax subsidy is appropriate. The question for this group always has been and continues to be, at what level is that appropriate?
You're still in my thunder, Emily.
I try, man.
Because the reason why I brought it up is because, you know, you reminded us that years ago, at least on my time.
I think I remind you of that every year.
That that grant is anticipated to decrease based on the original agreement, right? And so as we talk about those long-term decisions or strategic decisions that you're talking about, we take away that OSF mission grant right now, per se, we'll be back in a underperforming level when it comes to revenue. And so that's something that I'm trying to make sure that we highlight in this conversation. Again, going back to us, I think it would be very strategic of us of including Riverplex within our long, or three, three-year capital improvement plan.
And it will be a, a large part of our conversation next week as well.
Perfect. So I, I saw that in '25, I'm on page 29 when it comes to donate, donations and grants. I see again that strategy and conservative. Are any of those donations and grants inclusive of donations and grants anticipated for Peoria Zoo?
What page are you on, sorry?
Page 29, in the summary of the district revenues.
What's listed on page 29 does not include anything specific, the, the bullet point list of donations and grants. So that is not specific listing of Peoria Zoo. I do reference that in 2026, the district is anticipating privately funded projects for a playhouse and the zoo.
Perfect.
So keep in mind that some of those dollars, as we've talked about in other meetings, are held in the Park District Foundation. They would also be held in Peoria Zoological Society in their, in their funds. So, so some of those you won't see here until Becky's ready to spend them.
All right, perfect. I just, I appreciate that. My next question is on page 31, as it pertains to contracted services for, on the expense side. I see that our revised came over what we budgeted originally. Can we just add, add some context as to why that is?
On contract services for expenses, 2025.
Oh, you want to know it? Never mind, I marked that wrong. Apologies. That's not contracted services, that is utilities. That's what happens when you lose your glasses.
I was just talking to Scott, my eyes are bad. I think I need bifocals, don't worry.
My last question that I have, going over to page 32, we have other expenses listed a little bit over $600,000. What are other expenses?
So other expenses, largest chunks of that, refunds for programs fall into other expenses and sales tax out of our gift shops don't really, they're not really a contract service or a supply. So those are the biggest two that drive that number. There's other like mansillary miscellaneous accounts that kind of have some supply and some contract that run through them. So it's kind of a mess of other, but primarily the two things that drive that number up are refunds for programs and sales tax.
Perfect. I'll end on saying, again, I agree with Emily that I spent the bulk of my time in the financial overview, right? Because we, our, our job ultimately is looking at a high level where the district's performing. So I, I wasted no time marking that, that section up. I definitely appreciate the economic outlook portion of the fiscal overview, especially from a revenue, both local, state and federal. I think it paints a beautiful picture for the common constituent as to, especially when our revenues are, are large, or the largest chunk of our revenue is taxes, it's very good for everyone to understand where that's coming from. So thank you all.
Thank you.
I did have, since we're focusing on this section for the moment, I did have one question from comparing the two figures on page 28. I understand you've already said why debt service is going to be significantly increased over 2025 to 2026. And I, I understand that and agree with that. I was just curious, why is the maintenance increasing? Are we expecting more things to break down next year than this year?
Don't jinx anything. So district-wide maintenance services, the increase there, I, there's some staff changes. I think there's some changes in the way we're allocating some of our staff personnel costs into the maintenance line. But there's no noted like staff addition in district-wide maintenance services, but maintenance services wouldn't be capital expenses. Maintenance services would be things like our parks maintenance crews. So that would be park managers, equipment service, heavy equipment, carpenter, et cetera. So I think it's a combination, a lot of that is probably wages change.
Okay.
Matt Freeman?
Okay, as we begin our conversation about specific funds, we'll start with the general fund. As we present our budget detail by fund, we want to note for you that each section of your budget book provides a fund overview, which includes information about the workforce supported by each fund and its financial position and an overview of what the fund supports and its essential functions. Each fund also highlights key achievements and proposed changes to the fund for 2026. Each fund review concludes with financial summaries of each department included. Our general fund covers just what the name implies, the general operational costs of the district. This fund is home to all of our care and maintenance work as well as our administrative costs. Please note that capital projects that are donation, grant or debt certificate funded are also included in the administration and business department of this fund. are also included in the administration and business department of this fund. Since these sources of revenue and the timing of capital project expenses can vary from year to year, the general fund can experience material changes from year to year that don't reflect changes in operational levels. It is home to 33 different departments, as outlined in your budget book, starting on page 40. If your staffer funded here and you're with us tonight, please stand so the trustees and viewers can see you and please step forward to the microphone and introduce yourself by name and job title.
This is your big moment.
I'm Ryan Schaefer, Supervisor of Park Maintenance.
I'm Chuck Sims, Fleet Manager.
You already heard from me tonight. I'm Jacob Cuban, Supervisor of Park Horticulture and Recreation Maintenance.
Hi, I'm Alinta Hewitt and I'm the Volunteer Manager.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Gray. I am the Recruitment and Professional Development Manager.
Hello, I'm Amy Burcher, Supervisor of Accounting Services.
Good evening, Lin Du, Senior Accountant.
Willie Howe, IT Supervisor.
Thank you, team.
Miles.
Miles.
One more.
We love Miles.
Miles Howley, Multimedia Specialist.
Thank you, Miles. Key proposed changes for the fund are provided for you on page 51. Highlighted changes are as follows. The district proposes a $10 increase in hourly rental rates for use of Parks in Petruin Pavilion. Rentals at Granby Drive Park Pavilion will be suspended due to the Illinois Department of Transportation's construction projects planned for Route 29 in 2026. Our plan right now is that it's just a one-year interruption in that service, but because of that work that's going to happen down there, we do need to pause on that for next year.
The 2026 General Administration and Recreation Administration budgets include funding for software and personnel to improve the district's preventative maintenance, work order and inspection tracking. This project will help the district proactively address equipment and facility needs before failures occur, ensure regulatory compliance, enhance safety and provide a data-driven insights that support better budgeting, resource allocation and operational efficiency. A project team comprised of key leaders will begin working on identifying a software solution in early 2026.
Fund overview for the general fund starts on page 40. As Matt said, you can see that this fund does meet or exceed the policy's reserve level. What questions do you have about the general?
Page 44, the county complex, what happened with that contract?
The county, Peoria County, let us know they no longer required our services.
So.
That's a harsh way of putting that. Can you elaborate?
They just went a different direction. I mean, we're, we're simply providing mowing maintenance at the county complex facility.
They have a different vendor then, is that it? They just went with somebody else?
I don't know if they internalized that or contracted it out to a different landscape contractor.
We've done that for how many years?
I don't know how long that, that work dates back.
A lot.
Well, of course I have questions. So one thing that didn't dawn on me until I went over our budget book is that in the proposed fees and charges chart that we had got, I guess I didn't pick up that we were doing a $10 hourly increase at Treewind Park Pavilion. And so, you know, in my time here, we've always talked about the underutilization of Treewind Park Pavilion compared to other pavilions throughout the district. And so just a philosophy question, why are we proposing an increase, an increased hourly charge at a pavilion that already has identified underutilization when we have pavilions that are more highly used, who could potentially generate more revenue if we adjust their hourly rate?
So let me try to clarify your question. Your question about the, the indoor facility, which is what we're talking about.
At Treewind Park Pavilion.
Correct. I would say that our suggested increase in the hourly rate is to try to manage that subsidy as it continues to grow over the years. Throughout the years where we increased minimum wage by a dollar an hour, we didn't change or increase the rental rates there as we did at other park shelter facilities and other rental facilities. So this was a bit of a catch-up.
Would you agree that there's more than one way to accomplish what you just described though? So in other words, would you agree that addressing or by increasing the hourly rates at higher utilized pavilions or indoor facilities could potentially help address that subsidy?
Certainly, that, that would be another way to do it. Now I would, as I just shared, we did increase park shelter rental rates at all the other rentable facilities over the last few years and did not at Treewind.
Got it.
The reality is, is that we are tax subsidizing a rental at the current rate, which is not the, the policy that you have all directed us to think about in those situations, that we should not be tax subsidizing that. By moving it $10 to $50 an hour, it is comparable to other like locations and to other facilities. It is not increasing it at a higher rate than those other locations that when we move them, we did not move Treewind. At this point, it costs us money to host a rental there. And that does not feel like that is, that is how we should be allocating our resources in a location like that. It is still very, very affordable when you compare it to other locations. We're moving it from $40 an hour to 50. And it is something that without those changes and that recognition, we are making it very, very difficult to, to allocate our resources in that park in an effective way. That park is managed by our Small Parks Team, which also means we are pulling resources from other parts of the district to support that unless we can start to generate some revenue to help to, to cover that cost. But rentals should not be tax subsidized as part of our philosophy when we look at cost allocation. That is not a place that we should be putting tax dollars.
So I, I don't fully agree. I think that this goes back to the philosophy that Steve has raised as it pertained, and what I followed up with, you know, this is that balancing act, right? Of being a subsidized institution, but also we, we have to make income somehow, right? And so, you know, Matt, I asked you that very specific question because there's a lot of different strategies that we can use, right? I think that everything that we do deserves some sort of subsidy. We shouldn't be a, you know, 100% like profiting off of everything. I think that defeats the, the purpose of our existence at that point. But again, I was trying to understand a philosophy question. And again, I didn't pick up on it on the fees and charges when we, when we presented it prior. And, and again, it's, it's still not clicking to me that if we have a underutilization, especially in our most socioeconomic disadvantaged pocket of our entire district. And that's why I asked my question. It's not that I disagree, I understand what we're doing, right? And I understand it's competitive. But then I, I, again, it just comes back to philosophy. So with your explanation, it makes sense. But I just wanted, you know, I just think we have a, a different philosophy and that's totally fine for the reasons that we've already discussed as it pertains to the golf fund.
And you know, I, I think that, that we subsidize a lot of programs and we subsidize certain programs in some of the hardest economically hit areas. You know, we have facilities that run deficits because we think that they're important. Everything that we do is a service that we provide. It's just a matter of how we value the necessity for that service in that particular area. So I don't, I don't know if it goes against a value that we have in providing that service so people can afford to do those services, to take advantage of our services in those areas. It, it's not really a violation. We do it in a number of areas, just depends on whether we want to do it and at what price.
I think we struggle, and I, we've had this conversation before about whether a rental is a program. What is the outcome of a rental versus a, a recreation program where you teach someone a basic wellness skill or a sports activity? Or you teach them about environmental stewardship and how to build their own pollinator garden? Those are programs. From our perspective, I think staff, at least I will say I, struggle mightily with the idea that a rental is a program. I also believe that the underutilization at that facility is, part of that was in large part due to the shared use with Peoria Grown and the limited availability of that space because there were certain numbers of, there were certain days that that facility was not rentable. When Peoria Grown goes to the lower level, some of that will change. I also don't know that that will increase rentals significantly. But ultimately, until there is a, until there is guidance differently, we, I do not see a reason that I would recommend that Treewind Pavilion's rentals be treated differently than everything else in our entire system.
So I got it. I don't, and again, I, this is philosophy. I really don't want us to make this a thing. It's just something that I came up on, right? The bottom line for at least me, as it pertains to this, is that I just didn't know if there were other ways that we could explore in the future, not suggesting this budget because there's been so much time. It's not to say that I haven't seen this before. So again, that was an overlook on my part. What, what I'm saying is that in our, I mean, the average median income in that neighborhood, my neighborhood, is not the same as across the rest of this district. And so the underutilization, I, I know this isn't Emily's intent, but I just want to be clear. I don't think the underutilization has to do with the community partner that we have. The truth of the matter is, correct me if I'm wrong, that the rentals for this year, in spite of our new agreement with Peoria Grown, is very comparable to 2024. And so I don't think that.
I don't think their use changed though. They're still in there at the same time. What I'd like to do is get you zip code information about how, who is using the facility. And then I, and then we can have a, a conversation again. I believe there's some data points that would help to inform this as we move forward.
No, and I, I like that too because I think that, that's even a larger conversation. Why are people from the community, that local community, not using it? And so that, that's a larger conversation. But I don't want to suggest that Peoria Grown, and I, again, I don't think that's the intent, but I, you know, it comes in the work that we do. I don't want to.
Well, I think if they're there on, all I'm saying is if they're there on a Sunday, operating their market, that is a day that would be potentially a, a rental day. As a, I mean, generally if you look at when facilities like that are rented, it is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, right? And so if Sundays are the market, all I'm saying is that that does limit the opportunity for that to be a desirable asset for the community to use. When Peoria Grown goes to the lower level, that access will change.
Absolutely. And I, I think we'd also agree that before Peoria Grown, there was there the, the foot traffic, especially from local community members, was significantly, was significantly under what it is now as a result of Peoria Grown being in that space.
And the significant capital investment in that park. There was no shelter, the playground is better, there is a new basketball court. All of those things happened at the general timeline of when Peoria Grown came. So those things happened together.
They're not mutually exclusive, Emily. All, all I'm saying is that Peoria Grown has helped us out and I want to be, I want to be clear on that.
I totally agree.
And that's why I'm saying, I wanted to just hit that because I don't want that to be a misconception as we have a conversation about Treewind Park. I do want to say though that rentals are, while they're not a program, they are a service provided from the district. And, and I, I do think that as a service from a tax collecting agency, that is also something that in my view should be considered for some sort of subsidy. So I, I don't, I don't want to say that just because it's a service, whether that be to a private group, we shouldn't figure out how to be accessible as a district.
I think philosophically, we need to figure a lot of those things out as we think about and look at, back at what Carrie presented, where of our revenues, only 41% of those come from tax dollars. So fees and charges make up a large part of that difference and we do have to figure out where that balance is to determine. And that is one of the two functions, right, of this board is that allocation of resources. So we, we welcome more guidance on that.
Maybe we could defer this and move on and have a discussion because it's worthy discussion, but at a time where we can have the data.
Absolutely.
Can I just ask one question though? What is the, what's the total income for rentals there at Treewind?
I'd have to look here at the numbers. I think the projection for next year, hold on a second. I can look that up for you.
My point being, is it, is that $10 essential to that revenue that's collected?
Certainly not, is not essential. I think it's just us philosophically trying to manage that hourly subsidy on our rentals, which.
And to the amount of expenses.
Correct.
I think it makes sense to have the, the rentals equal across the park district, not just, and not to have one spot that's $10, I mean, $10, whatever the amount is, less. If, if you do that, I guess the way I'm thinking about it is there's nothing that says Treewind Pavilion has to be reserved by somebody from the Treewind neighborhood. And if people realize that, hey, Treewind's $10 less, we can have a bunch of people from Dunlap reserving Treewind because they want to save their 10 bucks.
But the reality is that isn't the case.
But in theory, in theory, you could. So now you're starting to play favorites.
Let us pull the data and have an additional conversation about usage. The, the number that is included in the detailed budget for rentals also, I believe, includes the Peoria Grown agreement. So I can't, I can't, I don't know that number in my brain. So let us parse that out and come back to you with an information sheet.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, Scott Loftus.
Within current policy, we evaluate the funds you see on your screen in combination due to the overlaps in focus and resource allocation that drives that policy. We believe it makes sense to combine their review here as well. In your budget books, each fund is reviewed separately and we will highlight relevant notes for each here as there are many things that are stronger when presented together. It is our tradition to remind you that these funds put the fun in fund and they certainly, certainly do that for our patrons every day. If you are a staffer funded out of the Recreation, Golf, Riverfront Funds, please stand so the trustees and our viewers can see you and Riverplex, sorry.
That's everybody else, almost.
Wow.
Good evening, Greg Walker, Director of Golf Operations. Pleasure to see all of you tonight.
Max Lake, Director of the Peoria Zoo.
Melissa Sierra, Director of the Peoria Playhouse Children's Museum.
Janelle McLeod, Manager of Procter and Logan Recreation Centers.
Doug Silver, Manager, Owen Center.
Cody Smock, Director of Golf Course Maintenance.
Courtney Johnson, General Manager at the Riverplex.
Angela Martines, Manager of Athletic and Recreation Services.
Pina Johnson, Aquatic Supervisor at Riverplex.
Cassia Robbins, Community Events Manager.
Jess Main, Out of School Programs and Camp Manager.
Marlee Hall, the General Manager of the Golf Learning Center. Good to meet you all.
Kevin Davis, Business System Supervisor.
Jake Rockhold, Supervisor of Events.
Chanel Hargrave Murray, Supervisor of Community Connections.
I do want to add, I do want to add, I appreciate each of you, you, you. It does help us to understand and see, you know, see who you are. So thank you for that. It's really, really nice to get to know who our employees are. Thank you. All right, Emily?
Scott Loftus.
First, key proposed changes for the Recreation Fund are provided in your books on page 74.
It's actually 63, that's my fault, sorry.
63.
Whatever.
Highlighted changes are as follows. Staff is proposing the discontinuation of the annual Turkey Trot due to rising operational costs and declining participation. While it's been a valued 54-year tradition, is no longer financially sustainable. Staff will explore opportunities for local community organizations with race expertise to potentially take over the event and carry the tradition forward in a new format. The athletics department is proposing, is proposing fee increases for select programs, including tennis, youth baseball, coach pitch, flag football, and youth dance. Additionally, athletic rental rates are proposed to increase per hour. These adjustments help offset rising supplies and personnel costs. More details can be found on the proposed fees and charges schedule. Peoria Public Schools' grant funding for the after-school programs concluded in 2025 and will not carry forward into the 2026 budget. Staff remain committed to supporting these programs and will collaborate with the school district should grant funding opportunities arise. In 2026, the Playhouse will broaden its impact by taking the popular open art studio off-site, bringing hands-on, STEAM, and math-forward experiences directly into the community while continuing to offer open art studio sessions at the museum during regular times. In addition to their second Saturday joint programming, a new partnership with the zoo will enhance Friday programming in Glen Oak Park, and the Playhouse will extend its Friday hours to 6:00 PM, offering families even more opportunities to engage, explore, and learn. I'd like to pause here and invite Melissa Sierra and Max Lakes to the podium to share more about their efforts.
Good evening, everyone. In 2026, in conjunction with increased programming, outreach, and collaboration with the zoo, the Playhouse will see new construction and reinvigoration with the addition of new spaces like a play grocery store for kiddos, where they can sell their pretend farm-grown veggies. This will reiterate our community's deep agricultural roots and model family empowerment via their homegrown vegetables. We are very excited about this.
Good evening. The zoo is excited to continue events recently started, such as Glow Wild, which saw 27,000 guests, and Zoo Tober, which saw almost 8,000 guests. Those two events brought 35,000 guests to the zoo in Glen Oak Park. 2026 will see extended hours on Friday evenings during the summer season with increased offerings for families around the zoo akin to a smaller rec and roll, allowing families increased opportunities to connect with our animals and increase our attendance. We will continue providing educational programs for more than 10,000 Peoria County students per year while working to increase this number through ZooMobil's and increased education programming on grounds. This increase in outreach and programming available to visitors is due in part to the collaboration happening between the zoo and the Peoria Playhouse. Combined with Lucy Botanical Gardens, we are working diligently to make Glen Oak Park a destination for lifelong learning and new and exciting events for all of central Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa and Max. Additional changes to the fund include, the district's American Camp Association accredited camps and after-school programs will see minimal pricing adjustments in 2026. Summer camps at Lakeview, Proctor, and Ancient Oaks will increase by $5 per week, and Lakeview's out-of-school camps will increase by $1 per day. All camp programs will remain accessible to scholarship participants. Capacity will also increase in 2026 to better meet demand. Lakeview will increase from 70 to 80 campers. Proctor will go from 65 to 70, and Riverplex will see the biggest jump from 40 to 60. Another option, another change will be aquatics will transition to the Jeff Ellison Associates Learn to Swim model, ensuring consistent, high-quality instruction. This includes instructor training and certifications, providing standardized, standardized lessons that enhance safety and skill development for all participants.
The district plans to add a full-time aquatics manager to strengthen the aquatics team and increase capacity and backup. Currently, there is one full-time aquatics professional on staff, aquatic supervisor, and this new role will oversee all swim lessons, support, and support community outreach, including water safety, education, and help manage the two outdoor aquatic facilities.
Changes in the golf fund include the following notes. 2026 will mark the first full year of operations for the reimagined Golf Learning Center, which will feature 21 bays of top golf-like virtual golfing, two golf simulators, and a license fee arrangement with Gopher LLC to offer a full-service restaurant called Fairways. The campus has also undergone a full rebranding, including signage and a new website. Staff proposes increases to golf cart rentals from $16 to $17 an hour for 18 holes, and from $11 to $13 an hour for nine holes. After modifying the $10 added junior youth golf passes to be valid for youth rounds from January to August 1st, 2025, to address course overcrowding during the high school golf season, the district now proposes to add a new golf, a new youth golf membership that offers year-round access at a price point of $150 annually. Finally, as we've talked about in previous strategy sessions, golf continues to struggle with water usage at its courses. And in 2025, the district paid a consultant to try to find alternatives to the Illinois American Water usage, and a well was suggested for Madison Golf Course. But no viable alternative has been found for Kellogg as of this date. Staff has met with Illinois American Water, asking for relief and is waiting for response, but we're not hopeful. Without some shifts in cost at Kellogg, the district is not able to raise rates to keep pace with rising costs and remain competitive in the local market. While the Golf Learning Center provides some short-term respite, it does not provide a long-term solution.
In the Riverfront Fund, staff anticipates some interruption of programming due to the planned construction of the Hankst Amphitheater and Festival Park. The extent of the interruption is unknown at this point. Construction will primarily affect festivals and larger concerts, which can be shifted to the south during this time. At this point, staff does not anticipate any impact to revenues or expenses outlined in the Riverfront Fund's 2026 proposed budget. Historically, the budget for the annual Fiesta en El Rio event was managed within the Landings Department budget. In 2026, staff is planning for the event and is budgeting it in a separate event-specific department.
Finally, in the Riverplex Fund, the facility will eliminate seasonal Saturday hours and keep the facility open year-round from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This change provides consistent access to Riverplex regardless of the season, expands Aquaplex Open Swim Hours by two additional hours, and removes confusion caused by seasonal schedule changes. The Riverplex will also introduce a family swim rate of $30 and allows a family of up to five members to attend individual open swim sessions at the Riverplex. The group must include at least one adult aged 18 and older, and children must be 12 years and younger.
Just to, just to clarify, the, the Riverplex, that last paragraph there, it, it made it sound like it was going to be opened every day from 7:00 to 4:00. You just mean it's going to be open every Saturday from 7:00 to 4:00?
Nick, could you explain more the, the thinking behind Fiesta en El Rio for 2026 that, I don't know, maybe you are, you have more knowledge about what's, what actually happened in other communities who might have tried to have, and you know, I mean, what's going to change, I guess? Why would we think this will be, people will be able to attend?
Well, it's a very good question. And, and at this point, it is really solely just a projection. We are planning for it to happen as securing the date on our calendar. I'd be lying if I told you I know for sure, like, right now in November, that we're for sure going to have this. So it's purely a projection. I'd say it's definitely optimistically thinking at this point. And we're certainly hoping we can host the event.
I hope, I hope things change a lot.
Absolutely. I would imagine we'll be revisiting this conversation in the spring at some point with the board. Thank you for that.
And Scott, when we, when you mentioned the, the district, I'm really, it's sad to see the district lose the century, 20, right, 21, whatever century it is.
20 per century, yeah.
So what does that mean for the kids? I mean, what are, I mean, that's something where we went to the schools, right?
Correct. We offered programming inside the schools for their after-school programs at several of their school sites. My understanding from the schools is that they have very limited program going on right now, but they are applying for several grants. And we've made it really clear to them that we are willing, if they are able to secure funding, that we would love to partner with them again, because it was a good partnership with them.
Yeah, I, I mean, is there, I don't know what I'm thinking, but it, it just seems that it would be great if we had some way to prioritize some schools or some grade levels or some things to keep children engaged recreationally.
Yeah. And one of the things, Janelle and her team, they have expanded their Dream Square program at Proctor. I mean, they're, they're up to about 60, 65 kids in their program that do provide a really quality after-school program. I mean, really, it's one of the best ones, to my knowledge, in the area. It's just so, it's well-run. So that is one of the areas that we are seeing the increase. And we are, Janelle and her team would take as many kids as they can, as long as they have the staffing for those.
What kinds of, is, is there a way to, like, engage volunteers? You know, if you create, you know, let's, let's do X at a school, and if we have so many volunteers that it could even be volunteer-run, so that it, you know, so that we could even begin engaging people from the area, you know, whether, no matter where in Peoria, you know, but...
So you're asking if we can use our volunteers to go in and do the programming? Is that what you're-
Certainly not at the level or the, but to begin thinking about a different way to be able to continue some level of interaction with kids who really need that, that motivation and learning about-
Yeah. And I will say, one other person, Michael Dixon is our Youth Sports Engagement Specialist, has done a really great job in engaging those youth in different locations. He goes off-site to non-park district sites and engages with this PE-like programming and tries to get those kids into programming, as well as our mobile recreation program as well. So those are some of the options that we've been doing, but I understand what you're saying. Like I said, and, and that's something, it's a challenge that we're willing to work with the school district, if they have some ideas that we can assist. But it is just one of those challenges that, you know, it's just trying to find the designated people to sort of run those programs at their locations.
Yeah. And I appreciate your, you've been thinking about it.
I'll hop in. So Emily, or Carrie, or whomever, can we explain, so Soul Fest made, it was a deeply subsidized year prior, or at least in 2024. We went through three funds at one time. So at this point, I'm just trying to keep up. But we've made a significant increase in revenue on that this year. Can we explain how we, we managed to come up, I mean, with that very impressive revenue?
I think Nick Conrad would love to take that question.
Looking like he's pushing his button and ready to go.
Just pushed it.
Trustee Sierra, the main reason for the financial performance this year was, or the driver of this was the sold-out Saturday. And we made some changes. This was the second in a row we sold out. But some things worked in our favor, more so this year. We spent significantly less on talent, but we also were able to monetize our VIP area. So we were able to increase our revenues, but we also decreased our expenses this year. So really, for a sold-out show or sold-out event, that really produced, I think, what we would anticipate. We certainly don't plan for that, and that's why you won't see that projected for 2026. But selling out, I think, an event should have a good financial boon for the district. And this year, it definitely did with some expense reduction, but also monetizing some of our VIP. And, and we did hit records in gross ticket and beverage sales this year. So in the entire event's history. So it was very good on that front.
One quick question. Do we do anything additional or different as far as marketing the program, advertising, or is it basically the same and just kind of change?
Sorry, I had to find one. No, I, I really think as far as, you know, with our marketing tactics, every year, we study what we did the year before. And our job is to always do a better job getting out and reaching people. But as far as expense control for marketing, we stayed within the same budget that we have had. I really attribute the success of this to, to Nick and his leadership. And I know President Johnson's very involved in Gospel Fest, so their expenditure control and the different avenues that they looked at for producing revenue for this. So really, I think it's just a, a good booking for the, for the artists, a great weather weekend. And year over year, we have the crowd come out and love this event. And I think it's come to, in its long tenure here at the district, it's come to be a district favorite. So I think that that momentum builds on itself year over year.
So just to clarify, Jenny, I didn't notice until you just said something. Soul Fest is included within, or Gospel Fest is included within the Soul Fest budget. And I think it is important to note, with Gospel Fest, we saw a significant increase this year, too, for all the factors that you mentioned. So that definitely contributes. I want, I think we should highlight that as an individual contributor. So going to Fiesta en El, en El Rio, so originally, it was in the landing budget. And so I'm assuming the revenue projected for that, although conservative, is how that event has historically performed in the landing budget?
Yes, that's correct. That, that's a very, yeah, conservative budget. The, prior to this year's unfortunate situation, Fiesta en El Rio, similar to Soul Fest, was trending very positively. It did generate revenue over expenses for really every year since COVID. As Carrie alluded to earlier in the presentation, with our events, we do budget conservatively. We're not budgeting for records every year, so we try and look at the average over the history. So that projection that's in the budget for '26 is a modest projection, but it, given the times, it is definitely a, you know, a projection.
Well, thank God, we, we, we budgeted for it to break even. So in the event that it doesn't happen, then it doesn't hit our butt. So going to Central Park Pool, and I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting where we approved this due to work purposes. And so why are we projecting an expense for Central Park Pool in '26, especially when we're transitioning that building to Peoria Public Schools? I must ask some really good questions.
Well, at the time that we put this budget together, the current status of Central Park Pool was not known.
But now we know. So is it necessary to budget an expense for that building?
I think it's to be determined if, if there will be still some lingering expenses at that point. I think it's safe to say there would be much less than what was projected in this budget. But there could still be some lingering expenses, depending how quickly the transition happens, the recording at the county office, et cetera.
So Attorney Day, you want to just give a status update? That would probably help.
The, the intergovernmental agreement was approved by both boards. So the deed is in the process of being recorded. At that point in time, there'd be a practical transition between the two entities on the use of that facility, transferring of utilities, things of that nature.
So is this proposed expense, staff time, utilities, or what?
It, it could be any of those things, but it, it is reasonable, suggests that it could be staff time as far as providing some consultation in that transfer of ownership. That building has a lot of quirks, as you've all seen. And so to be able to provide that technical assistance to the Peoria Public Schools team as we, as we build out their ownership and as they start to, if they decide to fill the pool, there's going to be significant, I would imagine, investment in our time to work through that process with them and to support them in understanding how those, all those different pieces of equipment work. So we wanted to just honor that as a possibility. Certainly, those dollars can go other places. It's not material in our larger budget. But we did want to honor that it was possible that we would continue to still have some expense associated with that building in '26.
Yeah. And I definitely agree. In terms of high landscape, it's definitely not material. Per the, the approval of that IGA, of the transfer of that building, I would hope that the only expense that we have with that building is staff time, because it's my opinion that based on the approval date, any other incurred costs should be up for discussion with Peoria Public Schools about absorbing those expenses.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one quick question. The Riverfront Fund, the fireworks that's listed, is that, what, what show is that in reference for?
That's in regards to the July 4th, but that does not include the actual expenses for the fireworks themselves. Those are paid for by Midwest Communications. So that includes some of the, the income from vendor- Those are paid for by Midwest Communications, so that includes some of the, the income from vendors. We also have a concert around that weekend that is funded through that department. So a lot of that is our concert revenue and expenses, plus our small income on the Fourth of July from vendors and expenses for like trash removal, labor, uh, rental equipment on the Fourth of July.
Not literal fireworks, got it. All right, no, no.
So, uh, one thing, I want to say a couple kudos to Melissa Sierra for the, a lot of work. Obviously, it's gone into the Playhouse and securing all those grants, and that the, the subsidy has been reduced greatly from last year, and looks like it's extended, extended to next year. So very good, well done. The, when you go on the road with this new program, what, what kind of locations will you be going to?
Bless you.
We are looking specifically with partnerships through Peoria Public Schools, and then some of our own facilities, and then some other community organizations as well. So there's a varied bag of, of folks that I know can benefit from this, be it a farmer's market, or the springboard market, or some of our north valley communities.
Festivals?
Sagan.
Festivals?
Uh, we do festivals currently. We're looking to make that a little bit more rigorous, and hopefully with some additional resources, we'll be able to bump that up.
And Steve, I just want to point out too, that would actually be partnering with our mobile recreation program, so they will be sharing that truck. And so a combination between Michael and his programs, as well as Melissa's, will be touring the city of Peoria.
Okay, very good.
Going on tour.
We're going to get tour t-shirts.
Uh, on page seventy-five, Scott, what, what happened to the athletic admin?
So that budget was basically the Turkey Try. I mean, so that budget, since we're limiting the Turkey Try, we moved some of the other expenditures into Lakeview Recreation Center that were more appropriate. But really, as things sort of like, we used to do the sports auction and card show several years ago. Now we really just do the card show, where we basically rent the space and sell tables. Um, so it really wasn't justifying the few, the little amount of revenue that we had, and we just absorbed that in other budgets.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, on page seventy-seven, uh, I see, Joe, the revenue is down. Oh, that's for the half-year. That's right, right. It just...
I love it when you answer your own questions. Well done, well done. Keep going.
That's right. Um, Scott, on, uh, page seventy-six, um, and it's not really related to any question of the income, but it's, dance, is that a contracted service? Or do, does, do the revenues go to the Park District?
Yeah, a hundred percent of the revenues go to the Park District. We do hire Christian Navin, who is our dance coordinator. She's a, a, a talent in the dance world.
Okay, right.
So we do work with her to provide the instruction, as well as train our, our young instructors to provide quality programming.
Next time, jazz hands, when you say that.
And, uh, eighty-one. I know you have Zoo, uh, Zootober as a separate list. Max, how did, how did they do this year, or is...
So Zootober is still under the Vence Department. Um, that's a zoo. Nick and his crew very much help, well, the whole Park District helps and coordinates.
Right, sure.
The overall numbers were very good. Uh, we were down about two hundred attendance, but we did have a Saturday that we had to call for rain. So had we opened that Saturday, we would have probably been up. Uh, we were up in revenue for, um, for food, beverage, and merchandising as well. So it was very good Zootober, and people just absolutely loved it.
It, now, it, it, it makes money?
Um, it's, it's...
Do we know that yet?
We're working on it. So, um, it definitely, it builds community relations, and, um, I mean, we're looking at, and I just looked at it earlier, what, about ten grand, I believe, um, that it's, it's doing, so...
In the Park District, that's making money.
Yeah. Uh, so, so, okay, so for about ten grand worth, um, so, I mean, it's not going to change the landscape of, of what we're doing, but it's definitely a huge help, and it's pulling people in that haven't necessarily been to the zoo for a while. So when you look at zoo attendance over the years, you know, it had, it had really fallen off, and the attendance is coming back up, and it's events such as this that are really helping with that.
And I apologize, I had every, all the plans to attend, and they kind of fell through for something else on that day. But, you know, it's not necessarily important to me that the event makes money because it's such a service. It's such a event for the community, and I think it, it, in that way, it provides a community service to, I mean, I, I want it to, don't get me wrong. But, and I think it certainly should, and, and, and if not, now will make money because it's really such a big event. And, you know, it puts the zoo on the map in this area, so...
Yes, huge with that. And no apology necessary, another, we got Glow Wild coming up that you can attend, and then next year's Zootober. So go ahead and put it in your calendar.
Well, I've heard, I've heard only good things, so it was, must have been a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I also wanted to extend kudos to Greg and his staff. I know that it was a tough year with the, but, you know, the, with all the work that you do, it would have been a knockout year without having to pay a half million dollars in water bills. So I just wanted to extend a congratulations to you.
Again...
The budget looks...
I really appreciate it. On the ops side, we had a wonderful year with rounds of golf, but Cody and the maintenance crew, they really, all year this year, they have been working to keep the grass alive, keep it in great shape, uh, making sure that our customers, our patrons, don't see a level down because of the tough year. So Cody and his staff really did a wonderful job this year.
Just out of curiosity, I, I know that there's local, uh, agent, government agencies that pay a lower water rate. Do you know what the difference is between what they pay and what we pay?
I'm going to pass that to Matt or Carrie.
It's my morbid curiosity.
It's about half of what our rate is, uh, across the river.
Why is that?
You need to ask Illinois American Water that question. We did, we did. We're waiting for...
We did include that as a topic of conversation in our meeting with them.
You know, on, on that topic, I, I think we should have a specific discussion at a strategy meeting or some, some meeting about whether there are any legislative solutions to this, or public pressure solutions, whatever it is that, um... Is there some issues I know regarding how they bill us in terms of having numerous accounts versus consolidated account? And, um, this issue of different rates, you know, why, why would that be? But they're a private entity, they're not a public entity, Illinois American Water. They do good things in the community, but this is one area where they could improve.
Amen.
Yeah, and I would, I would add the water concern, not just for the golf courses, but we've been hearing a lot now about the Mossville Soccer Complex, which also needs water. So add that to the water list.
Next week, capital improvement plan.
Okay. So, oh, okay. So I had a, a couple of, of questions going through the, uh, financial summary. On, on page seventy-five, I was just curious, the amphitheater, um, what is the expense that's involved with, are we talking about the Glen Oak Amphitheater there? What's the expense that's involved there, and why does it keep going up year over year?
The major expense there are the utilities, so water, uh, is, is a major source. Uh, that also includes labor and maintenance, uh, so labor, uh, for the municipal band concerts, which that is reimbursed, but the, the largest percentage of that is utility cost.
Okay. Like electricity to run the amps and stuff like that? Okay, um, and then on page seventy-seven, what is, uh, what's environmental programming? What's covered under that category?
So environmental programming, the B-21 budget lines that you see, that encou, uh, covers all of the, um, programming that we do at Forest Park Nature Center, Camp Wakanda, Tony Oaks, and Summer Farm. Uh, it is a little bit confusing because you'll see later, um, in parts of the recreation budget, as well as the museum budget, the operational expenses for those facilities and like their rental functions, but this is the programming function of all of those facilities combined.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kristi.
While you're flipping through pages, I just want to quickly note that Chanel texted me and said that we also gave out six hundred, uh, tickets to Zootober to kiddos in the community at different after-school groups, so, yes. Yep.
Um, with the, uh, I also wanted to extend, uh, congratulations to Nick at the Riverfront for having a great year, and it seems like you're... It's coming out with surpluses every year, year after year. I mean, it's, I'm sure marketing has a little part in that, but, you know, the, the programs and the events that you have down there are really knocking them out, attracting, attracting the crowds, and, you know, makes the Riverfront a place to be during the summer.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank my team, especially, uh, some of them are in the crowd here tonight, but it truly is a team effort, and as well as all of our cultural festival partners, our volunteer committees. We couldn't do what we do without all the people that really pour into those events to, to pull those together. And I think the dry weather did help us in August and September. There were some warm days, but unlike golf and, and Greg back there, the dry, dry weather's usually good for us. I think we saw an influx in concerts this year. Uh, next year, we'll see with the proposed amphitheater construction, uh, what that actually does to us, and it will limit our space somewhat, but I think as we've seen, our cultural festivals are very well thought of, and, and that goes to a lot of people at this table and in this room to help put those together. But those are really core programs for our Park District, and, and they've been pretty well attended in recent years.
It is. People drink more beer when it's dry.
You have to drink it faster.
Nick, do you see for, uh, any increase in Riverfront, um, programming events with this amph, this Hank's Amphitheater? That would be in probably the 2027 budget then? And whatever agreements we have would happen during this 2026 calendar year?
That is currently our anticipation or expectation of, the current timeline would line up with a midsummer opening of the amphitheater. That's still a long way from here now.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Of 2027, yes. So that could potentially come in the next budget cycle, but we'll know a lot more between now and next year if that's realistic or not. But I would anticipate, hopefully in the next, if not twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that we'll start seeing what that operation will look like and what impact it will have on our, our budget.
Nick, I wasn't paying attention. Do you, are, did, are they starting construction this summer?
As far as the '26?
Yeah, '26.
That's the current expectation.
Uh, I just have one more thing, if I can, and that is with the, the Riverplex, I wanted to congratulate the Riverplex and its staff, because it, just three years ago, it was an incredible deficit, and they have reduced it so much, you know, through their work and their programming and their staffing, you know, I, um... Courtney, congratulations. I mean, of course, you've been here... Four months, see?
Take full credit while you can, kiddo.
You got to take credit for it, so, um, but, but, you know, I, with the, the growth in the membership and the improvements that they're doing on the floor, and, um... I, I think it's just going to keep growing. I mean, I think we have to take advantage of that growth as we have it, you know? It doesn't last long, so, you know, we keep on pushing and keep on getting those people in. They're well done.
I'm, um, I'm sorry, I did, again, lumping funds together, I missed some stuff, but it just dawned on me that we covered Riverplex.
Put the fun in funds, so we put all the fun together.
Yeah. So much fun in finance. Um, I just had a clarifying question. Why is Riverplex supporting district-wide yoga programming? Is it because the, the personnel is coming from Riverplex?
It's also a great promotion to celebrate and to engage people. The idea is that that, is that outside of your four walls, you promote the Riverplex. If you like yoga in the park, you'll love coming to the Riverplex. But they've done that for a really long time, and we appreciate Raquel's work to coordinate that, to schedule the yoga instructors, and to make sure that that's a really high-quality thing that people look forward to every year.
Absolutely, thank you.
Matt Freeman, I'm going to do it really fast. Just kidding. Ready?
Ready.
Okay, Matt Freeman, you need a fund?
The next, the next one we'll talk about is the museum fund. Our museum fund supports six different departments and is very diverse. From support of Peoria Zoo to Lucy Botanical Garden, to the important advocacy and experiences offered at Forest Park Nature Center and Tony Oaks Field Station, this fund is filled with the vibrant energy that enhances our community. If you're a staffer funded here, please stand so that the trustees and our viewers can see you. Please come forward to the podium here and introduce yourself and your job title.
Hi again, Kristi Schumaker, Supervisor of Environmental and Interpretive Services.
Max Lake, Director of Peoria Zoo.
Hey, Susie Graner Ingram, Chief Naturalist.
Thank you, team. Staff has added an option for building rentals at Forest Park Nature Center during non-high-traffic public hours. Staff also proposes to raise family membership rates from forty to forty-five dollars annually. In 2025, the district purchased two track chairs to assist patrons with accessibility to nature trail areas at Forest Park Nature Center. Staff's been working on facility upgrades, for example, storage and charging stations, and signage, and standard operating procedures for patron tractor chair usage, and expects to offer this amenity to the public in the spring of 2026.
Museum fund questions?
Um, no questions, just, uh, thank you to the team for the, um, all the hard, hard work that was put into the purchase of the track chairs. Prior to 2022, with adoption of that DEIA commitment, accessibility was not a DEI pillar. Um, and Tim Burci and myself really brought that to life, but Tim Burci absolutely brought the, the concept and idea of expanding access through our nature reserves through the purchasing of that. And if I understand correctly, you all were able to privately fund the purchasing of those ch, or, no? Okay, well, it was an original thought, but nonetheless, we made the investment. But no, it is, it is a major deal, especially, you know, DEIA being so broad, you know, it's, it's very important for us to narrow our focus in order to make accomplishments like this. And so this is significant.
Yeah, thank you for that comment, Trustee Sierra, and I want to thank the multitude of staff around the district, Kristi and her team. Mark, I mean, it, it truly is a team effort to put this together so that we offer it to the community in a comprehensive way that also, you know, um, is efficient and done operationally in a way that, that people can enjoy Forest Park Nature Center in a way that they didn't get to use to have access to.
Two weeks ago, we had about twelve staff people following these two track chairs through Forest Park Nature Center, talking about, can you turn around here? Can you go up this hill? Can you do this thing? Trying to plan ahead. Katie Van Cleve came from Hisra. We had a really good philosophical conversation about, like, how do you, how do you set boundaries for a chair like that, right? Because you don't set boundaries for people, you stay on the trail. That's your only boundary for hikers. So how do you think about that and that expectation for how people use a track chair? And so it's a really interesting conversation and the evolution of the ideas of how we use those track chairs in that space and in others is something that's, it's a really, it's really fantastic to watch them all work together around those issues and figure out what that looks like.
And we have a lot of difficult conversations around this horseshoe, right? But I, it isn't, it's important, I've just learned this, in terms of addressing the, the concerns and interests that we have, balancing that with the, the feedback and the collective work of the team. Uh, because this is just one testament to the expanded innovation and focuses of you all.
Thank you.
So I, I had a question about the option for building rentals, uh, during non-high-traffic public hours. I've, I've rented Forest Park Nature Center. What does, what do you mean by non... public hours. I've rented Forest Park Nature Center. What does, what do you mean by non, when are non-high-traffic public hours?
So in general, rentals had previously only been offered outside of nature center's operational hours, which would be like after 5:00 p.m. or on days that they were closed. This allows the option under select circumstances if we had a request for a rental during non-peak times. So thinking things like mid-January, when there's not a lot of hikers, to where it wouldn't impact the general public's use of the facility. So we would try to allow those rentals only during times when it's not busy, if that makes sense.
Okay, okay. So basically, you've always had Forest Park Nature Center available for rental. This is expanding the hours to times when it's actually supposedly open for the general public, but maybe there's not so many people there.
Correct. Yes, and we have structured the building in such a way now with doors where we can block off the museum space for a rental, but still allow public access to the bathrooms if we did have those rentals during our normal operational hours.
Okay, okay.
Okay. It's 7:36 now. We've been here about two and a half hours. Could you, could we all take like a five, 10-minute break real quick? Is that okay?
Yep.
Give you all a chance to, I know you're all here. I appreciate, I know you're at night. You've been here all day at work. You know, I get it. I'm trying to get you relaxed.
Okay.
Amen.
We'll go ahead and restart. Kayo.
The Peoria Park District Police Department is responsible for the safety of the general public, prevention of crime and disorder, and the protection of the natural resources and facilities of the Park District. In addition to general enforcement of district ordinance rules, Park Police Officers also provide patrols, crowd control, special details, traffic control, and general security assistance at special events. If you are a staffer funded here, please stand so the trustees and our viewers can see you. Please introduce yourself and give your title at the microphone.
Now, now where is your people?
He was right here.
He was right there. They're all working.
And the security people?
Chief of Police.
In 2026, staff proposes to modify the organizational structure of the Police Division to add both the Director of Public Safety and the Chief of Police position, with a focus on filling these locally to ensure connectivity to other agencies and a knowledge of local practices, while also prioritizing innovation and access to cutting-edge technology and resources. In 2026, this team will begin the process of restoring the Police Explorer Program and will connect with the district's be anything and community connections efforts to inform and recruit potential participants.
Questions about the police fund?
So I know we are, as Matt just hit on, we're proposing that staff changes.
Yes, as talked about in our strategy session, we are seeking to fill a full-time Chief of Police position and add a Director of Public Safety position. The legal structure of how that works, we are still working with you to figure out, but the budget allocates the funding necessary to fill both of those positions.
Okay. And Emily, I'm happy you made that differentiation because to Joyce's spirit throughout this night, my questions were coming in, in the legal structure of how we're filling those.
We're working through that conversation with Attorney Day. We've talked about that since our strategy session, and we will come back to you with the best structure for that so that we honor Shalisa's HR spirit as well and make sure that we are compliant with Department of Labor rules about how positions have to be articulated in order to satisfy those rules.
What's the timeline for us to hear back?
You'll hear back from us fairly quickly because we are funded with Chief Edelman as an interim chief through the end of January. So our goal would be to transition to the new structure prior to the conclusion of his contract. That doesn't mean both positions will be filled at that time, but the legal framework and the structure for what that is will be established by that time.
In other words, how we plan on getting it done. All right, thank you.
I would hope both of them be filled.
I'm doing my best, man. Doing our best, I promise. Okay, the Heart of Illinois Special Recreation Association.
Before we move on, I'd like to invite Officer Meacham up to introduce himself. He's back.
He tried to get out of it.
Good evening to the board. My name is Officer Meacham. Park District for about almost 12, 13 years now. So Officer Meacham.
Thank you.
At your service. Thanks.
The Heart of Illinois Special Recreation Association is a special revenue fund and is a cooperative programming effort supported by the Park Districts of Peoria, Morton, Chillicothe, and Washington. Each district provides property tax support at a tax rate of 2% annual, 2 cents annually, excuse me. Since HISRA is a special revenue fund cooperative, it utilizes its operating budget net revenues to fund capital expenditures, which include building improvements and vehicles. The 2026 budget is provided herein because the Peoria Park District is one of the funders of this work. Further, as the fiscal agent and administrator of HISRA, HISRA's finances are included in the Peoria Park District annual audit. This budget has been approved by the HISRA Board of Directors, which includes Trustee Montez and myself. In 2026, the Peoria Park District will allocate $515,000 in tax subsidy to support HISRA's operations. Key proposed changes in this fund include making the administrative assistant data collection position. It will move that from part-time to full-time using grant dollars. The staff will also place a stronger focus on expanding unified options within Special Olympics programs. Those types of sports create opportunities for athletes with and without disabilities to compete together, fostering inclusion, teamwork, and community connection. The Focus Adult Program will be divided into two groups, providing the participants with greater autonomy and choice while also allowing for increased enrollment. And finally, HISRA will launch a Special Olympics sponsorship program, creating new opportunities for community engagement and support while strengthening the sustainability of Special Olympics initiatives. Katie couldn't join us tonight, so if you have questions, I will do my best, and hopefully Trustee Montez will jump in to help me because he attended the board meeting last week when I had a conflict. So between the two of us, we'll do our best.
Just a question about when you look at the fund balance, going down to $50,000, it's a dramatic change, and I know there have been capital expenses, and I know that's where the money comes for capital. So is there a, I mean, I don't think $50,000 isn't a whole lot. If there's some sort of operation need or just, you know, capital need?
Carrie, that's, just to clarify, that they would have a zero-based, zero-net budget if they did not have to fund their own capital improvements, right?
Generally, I don't think that is Trustee Heron's question. I think her question is about after because she's been, for the last several years, Katie, as Executive Director and the HISRA Board, has been deficit spending on the funds, so using fund balances towards some of the capital projects. I believe that Trustee Heron's asking about the amount of money that would be remaining after she spends out what she's proposing in her deficit budget next year. Is it sufficient for cash flow?
So the target would be that, and we have had conversations as a HISRA Board, both before, and I'm not sure since Trustee Montez has been on the board, but certainly President Johnson remembers this, about either bringing on additional park districts to help to increase revenue in that way. That would obviously require additional expenditure because you would be servicing a new population. There is also an opportunity to increase by agreement the tax rate and what is assigned to the HISRA fund, but that takes significant planning. And generally, if there has been a request to consider it, it has been too late in a cycle for us to figure that into the treason taxation or whatever that might be as a park district. So if that were to happen, those requests would have to come very, very early in our annual cycle so that we could plan accordingly to be able to fit that into our larger expenditure. Because if you look back at that, how you spend the dollar, right, that would be taking out of that. And if we were to stay within our constraints, you'd have to potentially reduce somewhere else to make that fit. So it takes planning, and especially for some of those smaller park districts, they may be levying the full amount available to them and keeping a portion of that to support operations in their own district tied to accessibility. So it takes significant long-term planning for that structure to change, and that philosophy has to be a conversation with that board.
Yeah, I mean, if some funding source is delayed even six months, I mean, we're paying the staff through our funds, right? I mean.
Their paychecks have our names on them, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go, please, because you're probably.
Trustee Heron, you are spot on to point out the fact that, you know, she exists, the HISRA organization exists within our financials, right?
And they're our staff.
Yes. And so monthly, in the financial review, when we produce month close financials for Finance Committee and Board, we do look at the cash balance position of all of the funds at the close of month. And you've seen, certainly with Park District funds, there are times where they're more seasonal in nature, so they have to have that interfund loan. The HISRA fund has not hit a point of requiring an interfund loan, but I will say when we were monitoring later this fall, after their very busy summer season, they were tight on a month close. So certainly as fund balance decreases, it will be an item that the HISRA Board likely will talk about, like Emily alluded to.
Especially when you think about a lot of their payments, and Carrie referenced, Carrie, Katie, Carrie referenced this with me in a conversation, that smaller districts are making their tax payment to HISRA in the fall. So she's asked to carry that cash, right, to pay all those bills and then get reimbursed, and that gets harder and harder as her reserve gets smaller.
I'll just make comment and say that I appreciate the strategy conversation because we've talked about years how districts, just beyond those who are at the table currently with HISRA, benefits from HISRA programming. And so I think it's definitely worthwhile to continue those discussions.
Okay.
Carrie Ross. Non-operating funds, that's why everybody should be excited, because that is the indication that we are near the end of the book.
If this is your first time with us, this means you're near the end.
It actually says that in the book, the narrative. When you hit non-operating funds, that's a good sign.
So non-operating funds is a combination of multiple funds. We'll review the changes. But before I do that, if there is any staffer in the room that is funded by the non-operating funds, please come up and introduce yourself. Thank you, Cody. Cody is funded through the liability fund. He oversees our risk management program. Okay, we'll go into the key proposed changes. Non-operating fund key proposed changes include the audit fund is the fund that pays for the district's external audit. So 2026's expenses are to pay the expenses associated with 2025's fiscal year audit with Clifton Larson Allen. The bond and interest debt service fund pays for the district's bond principal and interest expenses. In 2026, the fund is budgeting to pay $6,353,725 in principal and interest payments on the district's general obligation bonds and the proposed, 2025 general obligation bonds and the proposed issuance of 2026 bond, general obligation bonds. Next, the IMR fund pays for the district's IMRF employer expenses at a rate of 4.96% next year, and the fund is budgeting to utilize $275,000 of excess fund balance towards the expenses in 2026. The liability fund pays for the district's risk management program and the district's property and liability coverage through Paderma. In 2026, property coverage is expected to increase 15%, and liability insurance is estimated to be 13% increase. The paving and lighting fund, in 2026, the budget is anticipating to utilize $375,000 of excess fund balance for the following projects: district-wide roadway maintenance at $150,000, equipment service center pavement improvements at $50,000, summer farm entry and culver improvements for $60,000, Grandview Drive park inlet replacements for $60,000, Robinson parking lot improvements for $55,000. Finally, the workers' compensation and unemployment fund in 2026 is estimated to have a workers' comp increase of 2%. Those are the non-operating funds. Anyone have any questions?
All right. As the Board of Trustees, you are responsible for an ongoing monitoring of our 2026 fiscal performance in order to guide any course changes that may be needed beyond actions that are guided by policy. Here are some indicators that you should watch for as we progress through the coming year. In 2026, we will continue to prioritize becoming and staying competitive in the local market. We talked a lot about weather tonight, and while we tease about trying not to make Mother Nature angry, she does have a lot of control over our budget. A wet spring impacts revenue generation in both golf and at the zoo in ways that are hard to recover from. A hot summer reduces participation in outdoor events or programs and increases irrigation costs for golf, as we know. And snow, controlling snow and ice on our more than 20 miles of park roads and many parking lots and sidewalks not only increases our staff costs but also potentially pulls people into work long hours during the holiday season. A wet spring or no, keeping an eye on usage levels across our facilities, especially those that are reliant on membership revenues, must be a part of ongoing review. Declines in member revenues, especially at the Riverplex where users pay on a month-to-month basis, may indicate a need for evaluation and modification.
Next, the district continues to emphasize the need for and the opportunities that come with grant revenues. The generous support of Representative Johanne Gordon-Booth, as she has advocated for ICJ violence prevention dollars, has been critical to our strategic efforts to build out programming that supports our commitment guides. However, these grants track with a July to June fiscal year and therefore come with some risk. This year, we have been able to budget to support the second six months of programming from other sources, but that is not always the case.
We note here that our tracking and budgeting does not include the impacts of natural disaster or pandemic. That will fall outside of the standard process but will obviously require quick responses like those taken in 2020 as part of COVID. With that said, please also remember that when considering what factors or indicators may require a shift in our inventory or board action to resolve a budget issue in 2026, most individual budgets are relatively small enough that the challenges raised here don't cause organization-wide earthquakes. Exceptions to those are Peoria Zoo, Riverplex, and Golf.
As we close our 2026 budget presentation, we return to the image that has guided our work, a living tree that represents the Peoria Park District. Our roots remind us where we began, grounded in more than a century of stewardship, connection, and community commitment. They hold the wisdom of our history and the values that continue to feed our mission. Our trunk stands as the steady strength of our organization, the systems, staff, and facilities that keep us upright, resilient, and connected from our foundation to our community. Our branches show our reach, programs, partnerships, and services that extend into every neighborhood, bringing recreation, education, and joy. Our leaves are the visible signs of health and vitality that our residents see and experience every day. Around us, our environment continues to shape our path. Every fund, every decision, and every change discussed today contributes to the health of this tree. Thank you for helping us to tend and grow this remarkable tree. Together, we ensuring that it continues to flourish. This concludes our fund review for 2026, and while we are pleased to present a balanced operating budget with operating revenues, well, sort of, Trustee Montez, with operating revenues equaling operating expenses and no material changes in service levels, we note that next week we will be talking about capital improvement plan. So we'll be happy to answer any general questions that you may have that have not been resolved about operating budget, but we do hope that next week we are able to approve the operating budget and have our next step conversation related to capital improvement plan.
And by that you mean the capital projects here, or something?
Yes. Yes, we will talk about the capital projects, but we want to talk about an overarching philosophy. As we talked about at our last meeting, the need for us to think about things and plan. While you will be asked to approve the 2026 bond issue, we ask that we think about this with a little bit longer view so that you're able to see the implications of some of those choices.
It'll include the discussion of paying things early, how that relates to down the road.
Yep. So we want you to have that full picture and that understanding of how we are thinking about this and how we want you to think with us about this. And so we want to have a broader conversation rather than what we've done in the past that says, here's this, here's this. We want to talk about philosophy. We want to talk about how that is developed, and ultimately we may talk to you about some opportunities for us to think about some governance strategies around capital improvement planning and how we think about our future together.
I appreciate that strategy. Again, talking to Emily in preparation for this meeting, you quickly see in the fiscal overview that as we go down the road, our fiscal position is going to be impacted by those capital projects. So I think it's definitely worthwhile that we structured this like that, you structured this like that.
And from the way we've restructured the program committee, really, you know, we've gotten some really good ideas and new thoughts from the community attending the meetings. And, you know, I see it in the capital project, what's in the bonding project. So I think it's important for us to highlight that, too, that we're out there listening and trying to bring that back in as we can into our budgeting process.
I think that's an important part of a capital improvement plan. It's also figuring out how you weight all those different things in your continuum of consideration, and that's what we'll be talking about next week.
Thank you.
I just have two questions, and it goes back to the closing comments made by you, Emily, and I can't remember if it was Nick or Matt, I'm so sorry. Can you restate what you said about Riverplex membership?
Just that that would be one of those variables. There are some things that happen as you, so you're going to approve a budget, right? And we used to get the question all the time, well, what should I be looking for as I evaluate your performance over the course of a year? When is that moment that you would expect some course change or some revision to a budget? And I've lived through those, right? Like, we've had to make those choices before where we've been able to see in an April or May that, wow, you know, things have already, like, something hasn't happened the way we expected it to, some large thing. And I'm not talking about COVID, just generally. What are those variables that might impact a budget at a level where you would have to take action? There's a lot of things every day that happens, right, that doesn't require board action for it to resolve, that isn't material in a budget that is $53 million. But there are things that are necessary for you to keep an eye on to make sure that, you know, you're asking the questions and we're able to course correct together. So of that list, thinking about, and the example that we think about is, several years ago, we had a lifeguard shortage, a significant lifeguard shortage, and we increased our hourly rates from like $15 to 17 or 18. That's a pretty, that's a big shift, right, to be competitive in the local labor market. Weather, if it is a really, really wet spring and you don't come out to the zoo, people generally come to the zoo a couple times a year unless they are members, right? So if you miss that first visit, they don't reschedule that. It's hard to make up rounds lost in a March, April, May if it's really wet because you can only get so many people through the course in a day, so that's a material impact on budget. So those kinds of things. Membership usage level, it is saying that we've been watching the Riverplex and we had that conversation, right? And they're doing a great job, and those numbers are going like this. There will come a point where they start to go like this. If they go like this, and that number gets to a point where we can't sustain it with subsidy or otherwise, right, we need to be watching for that to be, watching for that to happen so that we take action swiftly to try to address that and to make change so that we can honor the rest of the health of our larger tree.
Absolutely. And the reason why I ask is because, and I agree with everything that you just said, the reason why I ask is because there are a lot of variables even that wasn't included on that list. And so I'm wondering if there's any indication that we're coming to that stagnation of membership or decline.
Not at this point. We're not seeing that. Scott, if you want to say anything, or Courtney?
No, we tracked that pretty closely, month to month, and we compared it to the last three years. And, you know, usually in the past, you could say, like, if we don't hit our membership numbers by January, February, March, we know. However, with the partnership with the YMCA, we actually have a larger range to sort of like rebound from a little bit because their summer months is their larger months. So we do see an influx of membership numbers there. So, but it is something that we sort of watch consistently very closely to sort of see what the trends are and how we're sort of doing compared to the last several years.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll go. Well, I've just got to close it out because, I mean, it makes sense. We all know that one of my favorite words is intention. And so, again, knowing that there are so many variables that can impact our fiscal position, I just wanted to confirm that there wasn't an intention behind including that.
No, it's just to note that there are things, right, to give examples. We'd been asked for multiple years to give those examples of what those things are that you should be watching for in the distance. And so that remains one of those larger items. As we said at the close, right, Becky said this, most individual budgets are relatively small enough that the challenges raised within them don't cause an organizational earthquake, right, because we're talking about natural disasters. But exceptions to that are the zoo, Riverplex, and golf, that those budgets are big enough that they can make that shake that you have to really look at what that does to the larger district.
That, and that is exactly why I mentioned this. I just go the third time that I mentioned it this night, but I appreciate you all identifying that. The other question that I have, very similar to Riverplex, ICJ was also mentioned. So just want to confirm that the intention of mentioning that is not a result of any indication of change of funding in that from the state.
No, but we also, no. We have had no indication that anything is changing with that because it is a July to June. There have been years where we have not been able to budget for that. to budget for that July to December. This year, we were able to do that, but those are, those are things that impact a larger budget. If that, it's a million dollars that comes to us over that 12-month period, and it is significant and integral to things like summer fun passes and multiple staff people and the work that Janelle does at Proctor, and you name it down the list, Chanel's Community Connections, all those things are funded by ICJ. Our hope and our goal is that we have enough runway to be able to find ways to sustain those efforts from other sources by being able to build in some of those dollars to support beyond what we know a contract period is. But we always honor the fact that nothing is guaranteed past the end of a contract date, and at this point, we don't have a contract past June 30th of 2026.
Similar to Riverplex, exactly why I mentioned it, I just wanted to confirm that there wasn't any indication.
Yeah, and I just, oh, sorry.
One second.
Okay, go ahead.
Because as you just pointed out, Emily, ICJ supports programming from not only a personnel but direct service side for some of our most vulnerable families.
Yeah, I just want to say ICJ is not a non-competitive grant, so, but staff have been doing a really good job about updating their measurables or their objectives and stuff like that, so that when it does come, if we have to, we're very competitive in the grant market. So staff have been really intentional about modifying those so that we can really present a great demonstration of what the impact is.
Amen.
Perfect, thank you all.
So I'm just thinking that there's maybe one other thing to add to your key factors to keep an eye on. Besides the local labor market, I think we also need to be cognizant of the cost of living, because for, just as an example, healthcare costs, if you're out on the open market right now, the cost of a health insurance premium has gone way up. People that face that may decide that, well, I guess I'm going to pay my healthcare premium and I'm going to forego my membership at the Riverplex.
Sure.
Because I can't afford to, can't afford both those things.
Yep.
So it's not just the labor market, but it's also the environment that we see ourselves in.
Very, very fair, for sure.
Well, thank you all, it was a lot of effort put into this, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate the flow and sort of throughout the whole year, talking about the issues that then were resolved in the budget and written about, you know, so I think it was, for me, it was, I don't want to say anticlimactic, but it wasn't like, it was.
There should be no surprises.
It was, it was good that what we talked about ended up in the numbers and.
We spent a lot of time in strategy sessions this year, talking about some of those items and coming to consensus about process, and so I will take anticlimactic as a compliment because that means there's nothing that caused a fight tonight, which is a good sign for an operating budget review.
And I just want to make a comment about the tree and as a symbol of the budget. I mean, it really is a symbol of, I mean, of course, the oak leaf has been symbolized the park district for a number of years, but, you know, the, as you describe it, the foundation, the trunk, the branches that reach out, you know, it's almost an avatar for what we do and how we do our work and, you know, the environment that we do our work, so it's very good.
Thanks. Hard to top Greek philosophy from last year, but we did our best.
Agreed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. I want to share something with our family here. Monday, I was out getting my petitions signed out in the northern part of Peoria. I think I went to about 25 homes, and of course, I didn't say who I was or anything, but I was just listening to some of the comments that the residents out here, out this way, out north, some of the things that they were saying. You know, it's a difference when you go to their door and you talk to them yourself, and you hear the good, the bad, the ugly, and what have you. But I would like to say that I didn't hit one house that's had anything negative to say about the Peoria Park District. They were very pleased, the majority of them were. They're concerned about the crime in our city and some of those things, but, and they also, we also have a people here that's a giving people. They do, they love to give, they love to help, those, you know, because they were talking about people not having food, and I'm just, this is just conversations, we were just talking to different houses as I knocked on doors and just listened to what some of the people had to say from all different walks of life. But Peoria does have a genuine group of people here that wants to help those that's less fortunate. We really do, and we really should be thankful for the type of people that we do have here. But the Peoria Park District is really a jewel to them. They do a lot, they come, well, some of them had a couple, not negative things, but, you know, I met some people that thought they had some ideals that they liked to share and do, and they were, I invited them to come through, but, but we do. I just want to say thank you all, because they, when you hear it yourself and you're talking to different people, purse to purse, face to face, it makes a difference when you hear some of their comments, but it was really interesting. I just wanted to share that. And also thank you all tonight, Emily, you did a great job tonight, you did, and the board, you know, your questions, the team you did, and introducing everyone, and each of you had your questions asked, and all of you had your questions. You're going to make me laugh, I ain't trying to say anything, but it was great. Next week, we're going to go ahead and get through, and you guys did a fantastic job on the board book. I was looking at the one I had from, I think it was 2019, at the house, I saw it. I was just looking at the differences from that year to this one, but it was really great, so, but thank you. I know you all had a long day, you worked all day, and then you're here all night, so I was trying to get you some, get home to your families, but we do appreciate your work, we really do, because you guys do a lot, and I tell people that, I really do, that they don't know, they don't have any idea what you all do on your jobs. You don't have like a, you can go home, some people can go home from nine to five, you guys don't, sometimes don't get to go home, just an eight-hour job, you have to do some other things, but I just want you to know, it's very much appreciated what you do here and for our community, because they are really, they really do like some of the things that we do at the park district, so. With that, thank you. Now, anything else that we need to? No calendar consent items, pending business, other business, communications, anything? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.